Good evening. This is a special meeting of Livingston's planning board, and notice that this meeting has been distributed in compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act. Mr. Ratner?
Here.
Ms. Foss?
Here.
Mr. Lewis?
Here.
Ms. Dufford?
Here.
Ms. Potani?
Here.
Ms. Vishnu?
Here.
Ms. Connor?
Here.
Chairman Fernandez?
Here.
I'll note for the record that Mr. Reber, Ms. Diner, and Vice Chair Santola are not present. We do have our Board Attorney, our Planning Consultant, and our Traffic Consultant.
Thanks, Jackie. If you can call the first and only matter on tonight's agenda?
That matter that's scheduled for this evening is a continued matter from July 15th. It's for application number 2025-39-LM for Block 3700, lots 28, 29, and 30, 45 Partners Urban Renewal LLC. That's for lot merger, Mr. Chairman, and preliminary and final site plan.
Thank you very much, and welcome back.
Thanks, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I got it set up. Derek Ford, and things like Taylor on behalf of the app this evening. Just make sure this mic is on. There we go. It is, as always, a great pleasure to be here in beautiful Livingston with you all this evening, and what a wonderful night to be here in town. It's beautiful outside. I thank you all for your time being here indoors when it is so pleasant outdoors. So, as Jackie announced, this is, and as, Mr. Chairman, as you announced, this is a continuation of our application, which was commenced about a month ago, seeking preliminary and final major site plan approval for the, what is commonly referred to as the Bottle King Project. At the last meeting, the board heard, and testimony was rendered by the applicant's civil engineer, Sammy Wale, and he has closed his testimony, but he is still here to answer any questions that might arise in the continuation of this application. For the board's consideration this evening, we intend to kick off with the landscape architect, followed up by traffic, and then finally, if a boy can dream, if an attorney can dream, we would close out with architecture this evening. So, I thank you all for my opening statement here. Mr. Chairman, do you have any questions you want me to answer before we get going?
Did your engineer go through our engineers' review reports and touch upon the comments that the engineer had? Did we, were those all covered?
They were all covered.
Okay, so they're all, and I just want to make sure that they're all, you know, complying with those conditions. We're all, we're good.
Yes, we did. Let me take one second here. Sam?
The water and engineer report, are we both compliant with all the conditions that they're in?
Okay, so we had previously issued an omnibus response letter where we indicated our responses to all of the conditions in both the engineering and planning consultant reports. There was a subsequent water and sewer report, which was issued right before we testified at the last meeting. My engineer has just confirmed that we are, will comply on all of the questions, considerations, and conditions in the water and sewer department report.
And also the engineer, engineer review letters of April 29th and May 1st?
Yes, sir.
And all the comments that were raised there will be addressed either through any additional testimony if required, or just working with our engineering department to take care of their concerns?
Yes, they will, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, great. Perfect. Then you can call your first witness then. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Or your next witness.
My, my next witness is going to be my landscape architect, Jason Tronco. Here he is. Why don't you get yourself situated. You can sit here, or if you intend to show exhibits, you can stand there. You're gonna have to be sworn in either way. I'll scooch in. Or you can go around.
Raise your right hand. You swear to testimony given this matter will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
I do.
Please give your full name and put your last name for the record.
Jason Tronco, landscape architect, Malillo Bauer &amp; Carmen.
Jason, just speak into the microphone if you can.
Not a problem.
There we go. Thank you. And before you get going, why don't you give the board a brief overview of your professional qualifications and licenses, confirming your licenses are in good standing and effect in the state of New Jersey, and a couple of towns in which you have been qualified and have testified as an expert in the field of landscape architecture. Thank you.
Yes. Graduated from West Virginia University in 1998, a licensed landscape architect in the state of New Jersey since 2002, appeared in many planning boards, zoning boards throughout the state of New Jersey over the 25 years. My license is current, and like I said, I'm Associate at Malillo Bauer Carmen Landscape Architecture.
Okay, without further ado, Mr. Chairman, I would proffer Mr. Tronco as an expert in the field of landscape architecture.
Do any of the board members have any questions, any objections? A hearing on the board accepts.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
An expert in landscape.
I much appreciate. The one thing I wanted to note, this is not in a submission packet, but it is an approval, an ancillary approval, a local approval that we obtained from Livingston prior to, I guess the issue date is July 11th, 2025. This is our tree permit removal application. This was approved by Livingston. I'm seeing an issuance date of 7/11/2025. It's not part of an application that the board grants. I just wanted to make a record of it because it does identify the number of trees that are being removed, the tree fee that would be paid for trees that we are not replanting. And as we get through his testimony, we may be modifying that, but just wanted to make a note of that for the record.
Do you want to mark that as an exhibit?
I sure can.
That'll be A3, I believe, we're up to?
I think that's correct. I have a packet of it. I'll... Ms. Hollis, if I may. And just the reason I made mention that is because at the last hearing, I had told one of the board members that we'd be specifically identifying how many trees we were removing and were replacing with replantings and the associated costs therewith. Okay, Mr. Tronco, why don't we just make sure you're familiar with the plans? You reviewed the landscape architecture plans in connection with this application, correct?
Yes.
And you assisted or oversaw or participated in the drafting of those plans, correct?
I did so.
And you're qualified to testify thereon, correct?
Yes.
Okay, sir, why don't you take us through the plans that you're showing, and since we just marked the tree...
I'm sorry. So sorry, Mr. Chairman, can I just know the presence of Board Member Reber?
Okay. Mr. Reber, we just finished everything good on the application. No, all right. So, Mr. Tronco, the floor is yours. We just marked the tree application permit as A3, so if you're showing the board something which is not part of the application packet or is otherwise modified, please indicate so, and provide the date of the exhibit, a brief description for the board attorney, and then we can ask it to be so marked.
Perfect. Good evening, and thank you. I will provide an overview of the landscape architectural improvements at the street level, a couple of the exterior amenities on the landscape decks for this application. I am displaying a composite rendering on the screen. This is a combination of our L2 street-level planting plan and also the landscape decks for the three amenity spaces on the landscape deck.
Okay, Mr. Tronco, was this exhibit, or was this document previously submitted or marked into evidence?
In part. It's a combination, but let's mark it as an exhibit dated 6/10/2025.
Mr. Valerio, maybe mark it as A4.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Is there a rendering of L2 and which other streets?
L3 and L4, which display the second and third level amenity decks.
Okay, take it away, Mr. Tronco.
First, I'd like to talk through the streetscape, the street-level planting. We have provided shade trees along South Livingston Avenue. They'll be planted within tree pits and landscaped underneath them. This, this is in conjunction with the amenities for the retail along South Livingston Avenue that we have prepared, and that's at the bottom of the sheet here. In addition to that, we're supplementing the surrounding property lines, north, south, east perimeter of the site, and we're doing so with shade trees, ornamental trees, evergreen trees, and shrubs. We have provided native plant material to provide this vegetative buffer, and some species are glidizia, juniper, and amalanque. In addition to those plantings at the buffers, we have provided shade trees adjacent to all parking areas. This is also major shade trees, and we used elms and glidizia and liquid amber in these locations. As we have touched on, the civil engineer has prepared a tree removal plan. That plan has been approved by the letter, Exhibit A3. Just for an oversight of that, 165 trees have been removed on the site. Based on the calculation in the ordinance, 252 trees are required to be replaced. We have proposed 97 trees, and there's a deficit as approved per the letter. With that, the landscape plan aims to maximize the planting throughout the development. Every possible spot where we can provide native drought-tolerant pollinator species, we have done that. You know, we're willing to look at areas where, you know, additional planting can be provided. In addition to the streetscape, we have exciting amenities on the landscape decks shown in the middle of the site. The first one is a more passive space. This will be seating area, lounging area, gathering area for patrons. The next area, just above that, is another passive area with a movie wall, outdoor grilling, and then again, spaces for gathering and passive recreation. And the third courtyard is a pool courtyard. This will be sectioned off so there's four-season use in this space. The top portion of the courtyard will be the pool area, where in the summertime you'll be able to access the pool and the lounge area. The bottom portion will be fenced off and also be able to use for, be able to be used for four seasons. In addition to the hardscape and the amenities, we have intensive planting up there, hardy ornamental trees, native plant material, and again, pollinator species, shrubs, ornamental grasses, and perennials. I forgot to mention on the streetscape, actually, that we created a central access drive. This is where all the circulation will come into the site, provide drop-off spaces, spaces for ride-sharing, deliveries, and a smaller parking area. And that, that's pretty much the overall unless anybody has any questions.
Just a couple. We utilized native plantings, is that correct?
We sure did, yes.
Okay. And per the tree removal permit, we do have a deficit of trees to be replaced, and the deficit will be addressed via a contribution to the Livingston Tree Removal Fund. Is that correct? I don't have anything else further on direct, Mr. Chairman. Happy to tender the witness over to the board for further questions.
Yeah, go ahead. Sorry. So, thank you for your testimony, and I'm glad that you're putting some 90 extra trees. My question is, what is the tallest tree, the replacement trees that you're planting? How tall are those trees gonna be, or are we, you know, what is the starting height of the tree that you're planting?
Sure. So, a lot of the shade trees, they start at 12 to 14-foot height, and they're three-inch to three-and-a-half-inch caliper, but those are major shade trees, so they'll grow 25, 30-plus feet tall.
And how many shade trees do we have on this property?
Let me just grab that here.
And what's the height of the evergreens also as you plant?
Sure. They go in at six to eight foot, and then, and again, they'll grow to 20, 25 feet tall.
Okay, thank you.
Just bear with me. Thank you. So, the breakdown for trees proposed on site, we have 57 major shade trees, 21 evergreen trees, and 20 ornamental trees throughout the streetscape portion of the development.
That's the new planting?
Yes.
Okay.
In addition, shrubs, ground covers, ornamental grasses, and perennials.
So, the 165 that have been removed, right?
Yes.
That's what you said, right? 165 have been removed, 252 proposed to be planted total.
No, unfortunately, it's 165 trees removed, but based on the calculation, certain trees of certain sizes need to be replaced at like a two-to-one ratio, and then if they're really large, to get replaced at a greater ratio. We are required to put back 252 trees. Of that, we have planted 97.
Thank you.
Along the eastern side, the top of your drawing there, the darker green, are those existing trees, or any of those existing trees along that boundary gonna be retained?
Yes, there's, there's...
So, most of the mature trees?
Yeah, 24 feet of existing vegetation is to remain.
So, 165 you are removing, or you're planning to remove, that does not include the ones you're keeping. So essentially, the ones that are removed is, are really in the center of the site or towards South Livingston Avenue. So, the calculation is not exactly, 165 is a total removal, and only 97 total number of trees to remain. What will, what will be the total? How many trees will remain on the site out of 252?
Yeah. So, 97 new trees will be planted, but there's, you know, I'm gonna have to ballpark it for you, but there's 60 to, probably about 60 trees remaining throughout the buffer areas of the site. Most of the trees within the parking area, they were really not in very good condition. That's where the primary development is gonna be, so a lot of those are gonna be removed. And there was a good bit of trees there. They're, you know...
So, what I was leading with, my question is, there is a neighborhood at the back.
Sure.
There's a neighborhood on the side. What are the specific plans to create, and how thick the plans are to create a separation between, during construction, post-construction, when it is, it is inhabited, the site is populated, occupied, and the neighbors? So, what's the plan there?
So, the plan is to keep the 24 feet of existing vegetation in place, and in addition to that, we're supplementing it with parking lot major shade trees along the back, the back drive. So, supplementing it with shade trees and then keeping the existing vegetation for that, for that width.
I'm gonna further dig into that. So, right now, if you see the site, there is not a real sort of green wall, meaning a separation between the site and the residence is not as thick. Are you proposing that with evergreens or new trees that you're planning to plant there, is the separation going to be thicker, sort of better? Is that what the plan is? I'm trying to visualize.
Yeah. Currently, it's an existing stand of taller trees, so there are a lot of shade trees, and, you know, they're limbed up, they're tall, so there's a little bit of underneath openness. We're gonna plant new shade trees, which will supplement that. It'll open up a little bit, light and air. Additional species in the forest edge will kinda come in and help to kinda reassure that buffer, or shore up that buffer.
Is there fencing around the property now? What's the condition of that fencing? I heard it's a little tired.
A little tired is an accurate description.
So, I assume that's gonna be replaced?
Yes. The fence is proposed to be replaced, and just to kinda dig into the question Mr. Potani raised, we are removing the trees as part of the development, which are in the central part of this proposed community. We are supplementing, and for the large part, Jason, correct me if I'm wrong, maintaining the existing mature trees in the rear. I'm gonna call it plan rear and plan right of this community, and then we're supplementing it. Jason, the bright green, those are new plantings along the rear, correct?
Yes, those are all new.
Okay, those are all new. The darker green, those are existing trees, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so we are supplementing the existing buffer, which is there today. There will be a new fence installed along the rear. Off the top of my head, I can't recall if it's chain link or board-on-board? Vinyl. It's a vinyl fence along the rear.
Is that the only place that there's a fence in the rear?
I think it's the northern border.
Yeah, so we'd probably be good to replace anything that looks tired.
Yes. Yes, yes, yes. We're, that's exactly correct.
Okay.
It's the applicant's desire to make the site, to improve the site, both just from a use perspective, but also to make it more visually appealing and to create a more attractive buffer, both for the project and for the neighbors.
Yeah, I was gonna ask that. Just two questions with respect to the landscaping. I'm assuming that you're gonna offer a guarantee for the landscaping?
Yes.
Great.
We will.
And then with respect particularly to the plan rear properties and the property to the right, I understand the landscaping plan. I was hoping that maybe post, or towards the end of construction, you would agree to a walk-through to see how well the landscaping is functioning, or whether there should be some supplemental plantings.
Yes, we would. When do you think the appropriate time would be for that? Six months post-installation?
Yeah, let's, let's work on that, but it might be...
We can work that out with the board professionals, but that, that's certainly something the applicant would stipulate too, and we would also, of course, offer the traditional two-year maintenance guarantee post-installation of the, of the landscaping buffer. Let me just mark that down.
Just one couple of questions now coming into the courtyard now. So, we talked about the fencing. There is one courtyard section is completely locked, you know, surrounded by, by construction or the occupation, the residence, or hallways, or what have you. The access between that, outside, the light, can you please help us visualize that a little bit more in terms of what kind of vegetation we're looking at here? Also, on the right behind that, that's accessible, I would imagine, to the, to the community at large, you know, in that, at that site, right?
Sure. Those are both located on the second floor. Access from the corridor on the, on the bottommost courtyard, and then also by, I think, a great room or a activity room at the bottom of the courtyard. Oh, sorry. This courtyard here is on the third floor, second floor, second floor. These are on two different floors. Sorry about that. So, it'll be built-up planting. We use a lot of perennials and shrubs in those areas. They become very lush gardens. We'll have shade trees or smaller trees and planters. So, we really do an intensive planting in the courtyards to make them really, really nice, you know, lush environs.
Just a couple, particularly up at the two corners, the top two corners, you have shade trees on each corner. Looks a little tight as far as turning radius for trucks, garbage trucks, fire trucks. Do you have any concerns there?
I think we have a variety that's limbed up or vase-shaped. I think all the turning radius will work. We'll make sure those trees are limbed up seven feet.
Okay.
And/or choose a variety that's vase-shaped.
Finally, coming up to, towards the South Livingston Avenue. So, I think throughout, I mean, if we see the streetscape leading up to the 45 South Livingston Avenue, we do have sort of not-so-tall greenery moving into, towards the site, if you drive through, if you drive along on South Livingston Avenue. What is the outlook is going to be? Are we thinking here taller trees, similar heights, what kind of trees, and what kind of vegetation greenery are expected to see there?
Sure. So, we have the street trees, which will give that presence to the streetscape, but set back from that, we have the retail café areas, which are developed with smaller plant material tucked up against the building, and then in addition to that, to provide additional separation, we have freestanding planters that'll have seasonal interest, have annuals in them, sometimes ornamental grasses, just to give that sense of space, create that room for, for that retail tenant.
But for the most part, and I, and I think it's an improvement over what's there now. Right now, there's too much shrubs, and it blocks all the sidewalk, can't even get past it. So, it's mostly just trees and plenty of open sidewalk?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Yes, and similarly, in the driveway side of it, as we go enter to the site, are they similar heights? One of the concerns that I saw in the traffic study, I know it's, this is not the topic there, but would be for vehicles to turn, emergency vehicles to come, pass? What are the thought processes there?
Sure. So, the entry court or the parking court, we really provided extensive widths to some of the drives, drop-off areas, parking spaces, the turn, turnaround areas like 36 feet wide, so there's plenty of room for pulling off or, or someone getting a delivery of food, and then also have plenty of room for somebody to kinda traverse around them. The plantings are low with it, in addition to the shade trees or the ornamental trees that we have provided through there. In addition, there's a nice lobby courtyard, a nice space out there for, you know, people to gather once again, wait for a ride-share, or, you know, just get outside.
I think the question was geared more towards the driveway on the left.
Okay.
As people are exiting the site.
Okay. Again, we keep, you know, we've...
Over, over to the left.
Far left.
Plan, plan left.
There.
There we go.
Sure. So, you know, we develop these landscape plans with a lot of that, you know, in mind. Many ordinances are written in regard to site triangles and everything, and most plants need to be below 30 inches.
Right.
Or limbed up to seven feet, so that'll definitely be accomplished here.
On your plan, the, which circles indicate the evergreens?
They have a crosshatch on the center, so it's bunched through this area?
Great. And what about along the rear for that buffer?
The rear buffer is the shade trees, the bigger circles.
Is there room to add evergreens there so there's a buffer year-round?
So, I think the walk-through was a great idea. Our concern there is when there's the existing canopy, there aren't too many shade-loving evergreen trees to plant underneath that existing shade tree canopy. Hemlocks could sometimes be planted, but it's more of planting the edge of the existing woodland and supplementing it with the shade trees.
Thank you.
I just wanted to go back to the, to the front of the building again. And I know we certainly talked about at the track meeting, I think we talked about last time, is, you know, safety for the outdoor diners.
Definitely.
Any of the landscaping, and I don't know where we've kinda settled on, on that, does landscaping come into play for providing any type of, you know, safety there?
Planters and little ballers.
Yeah.
Strategically placing them.
Sure. And I think it's, you know, it's multi-layered. When you're going down South Livingston Avenue, you have that repetition of, of street trees, which provide the first kinda level of protection, a wide sidewalk, and then we'll have freestanding planters with vegetation. And the planting kinda juts out from the building to create those little rooms, so that also provides some shelter to the kinda side of the, the café areas.
Thank you. Any other questions from the board, from our professionals? Any questions from the public for this, for the landscape architect? Come on up. Welcome. Name and address, please?
Anna Scalora, Sherbrooke Parkway, 42.
Thank you.
I'm gonna just go there for a second.
Sure.
You need spelling?
Take the microphone with you.
Yeah.
Just so you're heard, so you're gonna write that one down.
And if you can just spell your last name, please?
Scalora. S-C-A-L-O-R-A.
Thank you.
Okay. So, I am a, I'm a neighbor. I live there in the corner. Questions for you about the fencing? Questions for you about the fencing? The fencing that's there is very beat up. The fencing's on the property line, so it's a wooden fence on the property line. Then there's the buffer, then there's the parking lot. So what's the plan for the fence? Where is it gonna go? Is it gonna replace the, the fence that's currently there on our property line?
Yeah, I think there'll be, well, there will be a new fence and I guess you can testify as to the specifics.
You said it's vinyl, what's the color, what's the height?
Correct, and so my understanding is, and ask our, well, actually, if you know, Jason, but my understanding is we're replacing the fence with a vinyl board with, you know, I don't want a supposition here. So let me just ask one of my witnesses to answer this question, if you know.
I mean, typically it's a six-foot-high vinyl fence, but. Solid.
Sit tight, yeah.
What I'm trying to understand is if you, there's the properties, then the fence, and then there's the buffer.
Yeah, so.
Is there going to be a barrier from the parking lot to the fence? Because currently, the buffer that's there is really unkempt. I mean, obviously because of the, the situation that we're in right now with the current developer. It's a real problem for me especially because there's water issues. It's dead trees, like dead whatever. So I just want to understand what that plan is. And if there's fencing, who's gonna maintain that?
Sure.
Because there's no maintenance right now and it affects my property, mosquitoes, water issues, things that are falling, trees that are falling leaves, like nobody maintains that.
No, understood, so the, the current condition is there's a fence and then some plantings, is that it?
It's, I have a picture of it. I mean, you know, it's.
Show me.
The parking lot is the current property, correct? Then there's this buffer of trees. Then there's this beat-up old fence.
Okay.
And behind that fence is my lawn, it's right there. So where is this new fence gonna go? Is it gonna replace the fence that's there and then leave this, you know, whatever buffer you plan on putting there?
So I'll tell you.
And then how does that separate from the parking lot? Is that gonna just be an open lot and then a fence and then my property?
Sure, so Jason, my understanding is it's the parking lot, it's the buffer plantings, it's the fence, and then on your side, it's your property.
Okay.
So everything on the developer's side, including the fence, will be maintained by the developer. We're actually gonna post a bond, a maintenance bond, to ensure that it's, and the developer will obviously maintain that outside of that bond, but we will post a bond to maintain those plantings as a matter of law. So it will be much better maintained than it is right now. And I'll let my landscape architect speak to that.
Yeah, that's exactly right. So the new vinyl six-foot-high fence will be at the property line.
Okay.
To our side of, of the property will be the buffer.
Right.
Approximately 24 feet wide, 28 feet to the curb line, maintained by, by the applicant.
To the, to the point of, that it's been neglected and I think the resident referenced there were dead trees and stuff, would you be amenable to a condition that, in addition to leaving the existing strand, you'll clean out any dead trees, debris? I'm sure you don't want it to look nice for your residents anyway, but.
Yes, we will.
Okay.
We would stipulate to that.
And is there a water plan there, like to look at the water? You've been there, right?
Yes.
You've looked at what's happening back there? Because it leaks into my lawn.
Yes, I have been there. And we did provide the drainage plan.
Sure, so there's an inlet being installed at the corner. And then there's also fill terror systems, which collect water at the back of the parking area at the corner. So that'll improve the drainage situation.
So we're collecting the water on, on the rear of the site. We're putting it into a fill terror system and piping it out to the collection system. So that should assist with the condition that exists there today. Which property is yours? Are you, which lot are you on the map there? 19, you're right there. So there is going to be, if you see that little, there's gonna be an inlet installed right there.
So this, I would underscore to the resident's point, the dead tree, and I think the town manager mentioned that as well, Ms. Fass also mentioned that. I think the importance of having the evergreens in that area, to create that separation is key. Obviously, clean up the dead tree and all of that, but, you know, this creates a better separation for the residents. I think that goes miles.
Yes, it does.
So I would, I would imagine, you know, having that tore and ensuring that that is enough, a sort of separation, enough green wall, even during the fall and winter times, you know, you do have that separation. I would be, I would stress that we do, we do that.
Absolutely, and, and the applicant is, wow, my voice just got much louder there. The applicant, oh, my word. Voice from above. The applicant is very happy to stipulate to that post-installation inspection and we're also happy to stipulate to, if additional plantings can be established there, can thrive, we're also happy to stipulate to install them post-approval as well. We want to make this place, you know, something that fits in the community, something that reduces impacts to the neighbors, something which improves the area. So we're happy to do that.
On that note, is there a possibility that the evergreens in that area, the back line, be taller than the, because six to eight feet, it, it's not too tall. I, I got six footers planted in my yard and I'm looking at it, doesn't look six feet tall to me till I go and stand next to it, and yes, it is. So the, the evergreens in the back, can they be taller? Can they be eight to 10 feet?
Can the installed evergreens be taller on installation is the question, right?
On the back property line, yes, the rear line, yes.
They definitely can.
Or could they be put on some type of berm to raise them up?
Berm gets difficult because you'll be disturbing the existing root zone of the trees. What I kind of foresee here is a combination of shrubs, evergreen shrubs, and if there are any openings, there will be evergreen trees. So we could definitely look at that.
I'm gonna stipulate, I'm, I'm sorry to interrupt you, Jason. We're gonna stipulate right now, we will install taller evergreens along the rear, eight to 10 feet at planting.
And also on the other side?
To the right?
On the residential side.
That's the rear, that's, that's what I was talking about, yes, correct. And wrapping around to the right, plan right, Jonathan? Yes, eight to 10 feet around the rear, plan rear and plan right, correct.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I'm gonna mark that as a stipulation.
Just to be clear, we're talking about the evergreens that are depicted on the plan, because I did understand along the eastern border there, because of the existing over, you know, existing canopy of trees, that evergreens may not be able to thrive there.
We're going to have to do the best we can to install them in the places that we can. The applicant's willing to install, you know, essentially what we're talking about, we're, we're paying, you know, more money to install the taller trees. We're willing to do that provided that it works within the landscaping and that the trees are actually going to thrive and survive. So yes, we can do that.
What's the grading difference from the parking lot to the property lines in that corner? Does it fall off or, I don't recall?
So I think the overall grading is from left to right on the site? Or, yeah, sorry, from right to left on the site? So it kind of goes, you know, parallel with the back property line?
I imagine it follows the drainage system, so it probably slopes from plan.
Left to.
Left to plan right, where we have the infiltration system designed.
Which means if the trees are planted to the left of the property line, a six-foot tree might look like an eight-foot tree at the property line.
That's correct.
Or a 14-foot tree might look like an 18-foot.
Or an eight or a 10, yes.
There are any other? Any other questions from the board, from our professionals or from the public? Please come on up.
Hi, Michael Dorosha, D-O-R-O-S-H-U-K, Sherbrooke Parkway.
Did you get that?
D-O-R-O-S-H-U-K.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm gonna defer to your landscape architect about whether this is possible. The lime green trees on the eastern exposure there that are new plantings? And you said those are deciduous shade trees?
Yes.
At that location, depending on how tall this building is, which I think is four or five stories, how much sunlight are they going to be exposed to? And if you replace those with tall evergreens, like a Norway's first or something like that, would that species get enough light?
Yeah, I think the solar orientation for, for that area, it's from the west, you're getting a lot of the sun, south, southwest, from the bottom right corner. Shade trees will do great there. I think evergreens, barring any canopy, that's, that's going to shade them out, they'll survive as well.
Okay, because I was, I was just thinking if those were replaced with evergreens, that would give us a full-year buffer.
Sure.
And the only other question I had was the second-story amenities on this building, where the pool is, et cetera. If there were tall pine trees or evergreens, that would provide some more blockage because people in, where you live and on Sherbrooke Parkway, your second-story window, people are gonna be looking in your second-story window from the pool and vice versa. I was just wondering if we could do something about creating a year-round blockage? And. And, and evergreens tend to block a lot of noise, too.
Sure.
Something to think about.
Thank you. Any other questions from members of the public? Seeing none, I think that's it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, thank you, Jason. Thank you, members of the public, for the insightful comments and the improvements to the plan that we just went through. Okay, my next witness is Corey Chase, our traffic consultant.
You raise your right hand, I swear you win. You swear the testimony of this matter be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
I do.
Please give us your full name and spell your last name, please.
Certainly, it's Corey, C-O-R-E-Y, last name's Chase, C-H-A-S-E, principal of the firm Dynamic Traffic, located at 245 Main Street in Chester, New Jersey.
Thank you, Mr. Valerio. Mr. Chase, welcome to the meeting. Thank you for joining us here tonight. Please provide the board with a brief overview of your professional qualifications and licenses, confirming your licenses are in good standing and effective in the state of New Jersey, and give us a handful of examples upon which boards you have been qualified as an expert in the field of traffic consulting.
Certainly, again, good evening, everyone. Corey Chase with Dynamic Traffic, licensed professional engineer in the state of New Jersey, license is currently in good standing, also licensed in five other states. Bachelor's degree in civil engineering from the University of Massachusetts and I've been qualified as an expert before over 130 municipalities throughout the state, including the township on several prior occasions.
Okay, settle down there, that was pretty good. Mr. Chairman.
Any, any questions from members of the board? Any objection? Thank you as an expert.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chase, let me just qualify you with, with respect to the plans. You reviewed the plans and applications that were submitted in connection with this application, correct?
Yes.
And you are prepared to testify on the traffic report that you submitted and the supplemental report that you submitted in connection with this application, correct?
I am.
Why don't you walk us through that? And I would just want to acknowledge, we did receive the report of Mr. Klein,
I believe it was dated yesterday, and also his original report of July or June.
And we're gonna testify and provide responses on that this evening. So take it away and again, same thing as our prior witness. If you get an exhibit that has not been already marked, please just identify it as such and we'll have it marked into the record.
Certainly, and I'm gonna be referring to the exhibit that was just marked A4, which is on the screen before you this evening. It's the architectural rendering that the landscape architect just testified to. And just to recap for the board, just briefly, testimony that was previously provided by the site engineer. Again, the site's located along South Livingston Avenue, currently occupied by two commercial buildings. The northern commercial building has a second story, which contains some office and personal services space as well. We are proposing to provide three access points along South Livingston Avenue. The southernmost access point will be full access, located directly adjacent to the southern building facade. The central access point is bifurcated by the landscape island. And again, as was described by the landscape architect, provides access to some angled parking in front of the retail space, as well as provides access to that drop-off area located directly in front of the residential portion of the development. It's also important to note that between the southern access drive and that central bifurcated access drive, there is an existing cross-access aisle that runs north-south. It actually runs beneath the building and that provides one of the primary access points to the parking garage for the residential tenants of the facility. The northern access drive is located largely in the same position that the existing driveway is today. Again, that'll provide full access to South Livingston Avenue. At the northeastern corner of the proposed residential building, there's also a secondary access point to, to the parking garage, again, which is located in the northeast corner of that building.
Just orient me for a second, I apologize. Is South Livingston Avenue, is that a local street or is that a county road?
That is a county road.
Okay, so as any condition of approval, should the board act favorably on this application? We already have submitted the county, but as the board is well aware, the county does not act on local applications until the board takes action. So that would also be, should the board act favorably, a condition of approval. But you have submitted these plans to the county, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, very good, take it away.
As Mr. Orth mentioned, we did prepare a traffic impact study. We did have the ability to revise that traffic impact study. It was last revised June 9th, 2025. And that was in response to the initial comments that Mr. Klein issued in his May 1st, 2025 letter. We did receive the updated letter from Mr. Klein, which was dated August 4th, 2025. Like to just provide the board a summary of what went into the traffic impact study. As you've heard me testify to previously, we prepare pre- and post-development analysis along the adjacent roadway network to determine if there are any substantial traffic impacts. Sorry, am I speaking too fast? I'll slow down. You can just give me a glare if, if I speed up.
Take, take your time, it's just us tonight, take your time.
Certainly, so we, we provide a pre- and post-development traffic impact assessment on the adjacent roadway network. Given that this is a mixed-use development, it will have a residential component as well as a commercial component, we focused on all three of the critical peak hours. We focused on the weekday morning and evening peak commuter hours. We also focused on the Saturday midday, which has an overlap of residential activity as well as commercial activity. We did perform traffic counts at three locations along the adjacent roadway to the north at the signalized intersection with Route 10 and then the two existing side streets, Oak Street and Arden Road, which are in close proximity to the subject.
And when did we perform these traffic counts?
They were performed in April of 2024. And as Mr. Klein recommended as part of his initial review, we grew those traffic volumes by the NJDOT published growth rate to represent 2025 existing volumes. So although the counts were done in April of 2024, they did have a growth rate applied to them to represent 2025 existing conditions, which served as the baseline of our analysis.
And so school was in, in, school was in?
That's correct.
Right, at the time you took the counts? And we also took into account the adjacent or the nearby developments of which we were informed of by the board in connection with the preparation of this report, correct?
Yeah, that's correct, and those are outlined on page seven of our report. There are five developments that were identified in the area, which could potentially have an impact on the traffic conditions. So those were also factored into the background.
But you, you did mention, you did it when school was open, but you didn't do it at a time when school was letting out, correct? You know, when, when the high school lets out?
We did not.
Okay.
So there are five developments that were identified as area developments that we needed to account for through consultation with staff. Those are all listed on page seven of our report. The additional traffic associated with each of those developments was again added into the background traffic. So our analysis provides a comprehensive assessment of the impact of not just this development on the adjacent roadway network, but any additional traffic which may, may be generated by those five developments that's not currently on the roadway network. As traffic engineers always do, to project the traffic that's generated by this development, we looked at data published by the Institute of Transportation Engineers. That's both the national and state standard for developing traffic projections for a wide variety of uses. Those results are summarized on table four, which is located on page nine of our report. We provided traffic projections for each of the three components. The, the mid-rise residential building, so the 220 residential units, the six townhomes, as well as the approximately. the six townhomes, as well as the approximately 19,000 square feet of commercial space. Those, each individual uses are all broken out separately in Table 4, and then we provide a comprehensive total of the additional traffic that's generated by the development overall. There is going to be some internal interaction, that's one of the benefits of mixed-use developments. You're going to have residents of that building which will utilize the commercial space upon occupancy. So there is a minor reduction in traffic associated by that interaction, by the existing residential tenants of the building utilizing that existing commercial space, which will be an added amenity to those tenants. What, one thing that's really important to note is, as I mentioned, this, the property is occupied by two commercial buildings. One is, again, has some office and personal service space above it. So those buildings could have traffic generation and did have traffic generation at some point. You know, the Walgreens was there, previously the Bottle King, the Dunkin' Donuts, things of that nature, all generating traffic. To be conservative, we assume this was new over vacant land. So we didn't take any credit for the existing, either re-occupancy or re-tenancy of those potential commercial buildings. So again, an extremely conservative position on our approach to this analysis, assuming that it was all new over vacant land. If you ran ITE trip generation projections for that commercial space and compared it to the development that we're proposing before you this evening, the trip generation is essentially awash. It would be equal to what that commercial space would have generated from an ITE trip generation perspective compared to what the mixed-use development is going to generate. But again, to be extremely conservative, we didn't take any credit for that use. We assume this is all new over vacant land, and we just added all of our additional traffic that's summarized on Table 4 onto the adjacent roadway network.
So Corey, if I can interrupt just for a second, let's just, just talk about a little bit what we did here. So we took the existing site as developed, correct? And that site has a certain amount of traffic generated to it, from it, as a use, correct?
That's correct.
And then we said, okay, we have a new proposal coming in. And this proposal generates X amount of traffic and trips, correct?
Correct.
And then we said, okay, we also understand there's other developments in the area, either contemplated or existing, correct?
Correct.
And we projected, as if this development, as you just said, was something new, something that took over a vacant piece of property, correct?
That's correct.
And so you projected your traffic as if this site were vacant.
Correct.
As if there was nothing there, there was no traffic going in there at all, correct?
That's correct.
And so the findings that you're presenting take no account for all the existing traffic going in and out of the site as it exists today, correct?
That's correct.
And so at some point, you're going to come back to me and say, when we compare this to what is there today, you're going to give me that finding, correct?
And I believe I just mentioned that it's essentially equal to what was previously there. And again, obviously, we understand today that the commercial buildings are largely vacant. You know, there's a few commercial tenants remaining. But again, those could have been re-tenanted at some point. They could have been repurposed as new commercial facilities, so.
And the last thing, the ITE manual that you utilize, that is kind of the baseline document for your area, the traffic consulting area, right? The ITE manual?
It is, yes.
Okay, and that's the, that's the, the ball work, that's what you utilize, that's what every traffic engineer utilizes to make their projections, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, great. Go ahead.
As I mentioned, we performed a pre- and post-development analysis. Those results are summarized on Table 5, which is located on page 10 of our report. They provide an analysis of the adjacent roadway network under the future conditions with those five area developments that I mentioned, as well as two additional years of background growth. Given that it's 2025, we assume completion of this project in 2027. So we included two supplemental years of additional background growth, plus those five projects that I mentioned. That serves as what we term the no-build condition as our baseline to what we'll compare the operations of the adjacent roadway network with the additional traffic generated by this proposed development. Again, but looking at all three peak hours, the weekday morning, the weekday evening, and the Saturday midday peak hour. As I know the chairman mentioned, you know, the dismissal of high school, we're really focusing on when this, the development is going to peak, and that's going to be during the commuter hours. You have residential tenants that are going to exit the facility in the morning, they're going to return home in the evening. That's one of the benefits of switching from a primarily commercial development to a residential development. You don't have a lot of the high turnover trips that result all throughout the day. Traditionally, you know, residential tenants will exit that facility in the morning and then again return home in the evening. Certainly, there may be some people that work from home, but their activity is somewhat limited during the mid-portion of the day. So you don't see that constant stream of traffic in and out of a residential development as you do a commercial development. So certainly, again, a benefit to going from a strictly commercial to a mixed-use development, which consists of primarily residential and then some neighborhood commercial tenants. As I mentioned again, those level of service results, Table 5, which is located on page 10 of our report, we do that pre- and post-development analysis to see if there are any degradations in the overall operational conditions. You know, again, we focus on the intersection of Route 10 and Livingston Avenue, South Livingston Avenue and Oak Street, and South Livingston Avenue and Arden Road, and then the three site access points along South Livingston Avenue. Focusing on the adjacent signalized intersection with Route 10, looking at the overall operations of the intersection, there were no degradations in the overall operational levels of service. There was a maximum of a one-second increase, or two-second increase in the overall intersection delay when you add additional traffic onto the adjacent intersection operations. And again, as I mentioned, very conservative in nature in that we took no credit for the existing traffic generated by the commercial facilities which occupied the site today. We also took a look at the unsignalized intersections, both the site driveway intersections, as well as Arden Road and Oak Street. Those intersection operations became the subject of some comments that were issued by Mr. Klein, requesting some additional analysis to specifically how do those intersection operations truly function, given the queuing that occurs from the adjacent intersection with Route 10. We took the opportunity between the initial traffic study and the resubmitted traffic study to go out and do an additional analysis, which we call a gap study, which we actually will monitor the existing gaps in traffic that are created by the adjacent traffic signals. With the traffic signal at Cedar Street and the traffic signal at Route 10, what you actually have is you'll have traffic that'll platoon. That creates gaps in traffic, which are not recognized, unfortunately, by the unsignalized analysis that we prepare. That analysis assumes that all vehicles arrive at a random rate. So it has twofold, it captures the platooning in traffic which occurs, it also captures the impact of the queue, which will exist from Route 10 as you head northbound along South Livingston Avenue towards Route 10. Obviously, during certain times of the day, that queue will extend back towards the subject property. So the inclusion of that gap study or analysis, that allows us to actually assess how many vehicles could process both into and out of these driveways and adjacent side streets with the existing prevailing conditions on the adjacent roadway network. Those results are summarized on Tables 6 and 7, they're located on Pages 12 and 13 of our report. And what we do is, we look at the total available gaps. We looked at both the left turn in and the right turn out. Those obviously require less of a gap in traffic because it's an easier move to make. And then separately, we also looked at the left turn exiting movement, which requires a longer gap because you're crossing two lanes of traffic along the northbound South Livingston Avenue.
Just as you're, we have a couple of ingress and egress, we have a couple of ingress and egress points on the property. As you testified, feel free to point it out, you know, which portion of the property you're speaking to. Thank you.
Certainly. So again, as I mentioned, we took a look at those existing available gaps in traffic, and then looked at the gap demand, which is the amount of vehicles that are going to be utilizing that gap, those gaps potentially upon redevelopment of the subject property, should the board act favorably. And what we look for in this analysis, we want to see multiples of available gaps. If it was a one-to-one ratio, you run into the situation where you could say, as a board member, or Mr. Klein could say, well, then that car needs to arrive at that exact time to have that gap available, or they have the chance of missing it. When you have multiples of available gaps, that increases the likelihood that as a vehicle approaches waiting to turn left out, that there will be an available gap in traffic to accommodate them to make that movement. And that's what you can see really in summarized in Tables 6 and Table 7. If you look at the total vehicle gaps available, you know, those represent multiples of the gap demand, which is located just below that. So in my professional opinion, based on the results of the gap study, there will be sufficient gaps in traffic created by the platooning of traffic as a result of those two adjacent signalized intersections, even with consideration of the vehicle queuing from the adjacent signalized intersection at Route 10 to accommodate both those left turn ingress and left turn egress movements from those site driveways. I thought Mr. Orth was going to ask me another question.
Yeah, you were.
He had that look on his face.
I had the look on my face.
You did.
No, I'm okay on direct.
Just to go through parking really quickly and overall site access and circulation, we worked with the site engineer on the overall site access and circulation. There are three loading zones proposed onsite. There is one located directly adjacent to the existing commercial building, the southern building facade, which provides a combination of both loading and refuse pickup. The refuse pickup will be scheduled through a private hauler. It's typically two times a week. That's all done at off-peak hours to not have any impact on the loading operations. There's also another loading zone, again, on the southern building facade, located in the southeast corner of the subject property. That will also be used for movement activities, which are all scheduled through building management. Those, again, are all scheduled to occur outside of typical peak hours, but they are all scheduled through building management, so you don't run the risk of two people trying to move in or out at the same time. The management will schedule all those moves accordingly. And there is a third loading zone, which is located along the northern building facade. Again, that shares with refuse, which, again, will be done through a private hauler to ensure that there's no overlap. That'll also be utilized as the delivery area for the commercial portion of the building, which is again located along South Livingston Avenue. As the landscape architect did just mention, we do provide that circular access drive along the central portion, that bifurcated driveway. That driveway was purposely designed at a 36-foot width, so you could accommodate, it's again a one-way, counterclockwise vehicular circulation from South Livingston Avenue back out to South Livingston Avenue. Given that we're providing 36 feet in width, there is enough width there to accommodate parked vehicles located directly adjacent to that circular portion of the development, either for rideshare, Uber Eats, Amazon deliveries, UPS deliveries, things of that nature, and still allow a passenger vehicle to pass to the inside and recirculate that aisle. They do also have the opportunity, as they come in from the site, if they're making a left or right in from South Livingston Avenue in that central driveway, as I previously mentioned, there is that north-south cross-access aisle, which runs beneath the building, which does provide cross-access to the overall parking area, which wraps the southern, eastern, and northern building facade. So there is sufficient circulation area to accommodate the refuse, the emergency vehicles, as well as the anticipated delivery vehicles for this property. I know that was mentioned earlier, the southeastern and northeastern corners of the property, and relative to those trees, the landscape architect mentioned that those trees would be limbed up to seven feet in height to ensure that there's adequate maneuvering area beneath those trees for both passenger vehicles, as well as any vehicles circulating that area, refuse or emergency.
So let's take a pause for a minute. I think I want to note, this community will have a 24/7 onsite manager, who will coordinate move-ins and move-outs. So tenant move-in, move-out will be coordinated through the building operator, and they can be addressed at off-peak hours. So I want to kind of break it down a little bit, talking about move-in and move-out. This always comes up, I'm sure the board is going to ask. Retail loading, let's just go through it one more time. Bottom right-hand corner, correct?
Yeah, it's correct. As I mentioned, there's two.
There it is.
Spaces, it's currently being circled by the cursor. So it's on the southern building facade, the loading zone closest to South Livingston Avenue.
So they have their dedicated space there.
They do, and also, there's, it also doubles as a refuse area, so there will be retail loading in both refuse.
So trash can move in and out of there as well?
Correct.
Okay, so tenant move-in, move-out, moving vehicles, where are they going to be?
They're going to be located again, southern building facade, the easternmost loading area. There is a specific, and the architect will touch on this as he goes through the building layout, but there is a move-in door directly adjacent to that loading zone to accommodate tenant move-in and move-out activities.
Now, drop-off of just people getting dropped off by Uber or food delivery vehicles, where is that going to take place?
Those are all going to occur at that central access, the bifurcated access aisle, right against that circular portion of development, right in front of the main lobby.
Okay, and again, we have 36 feet of space there for vehicles to pull off and drop off either food or passengers, correct?
That's correct, and we also, as you mentioned, and I forgot to note this in my direct testimony, we do have onsite management 24 hours. So they will be observing these activities. You know, the last thing that we want is for this to become an extended parking area where people are parking their vehicles and doing other activities. So that will be monitored to ensure that it is truly just utilized as a pickup-drop-off zone.
All right, and just kind of as a reference, we have 36 feet there. RSIS is 24 feet, correct?
That's correct.
For a boulevard-type entrance there.
And that's for two-way traffic.
That's for two-way traffic.
This is just one way, again, in a counterclockwise direction.
So we have plenty of space for a car, drop-off vehicle to pull to the side, and for vehicles to get around it, correct?
Correct.
Okay, now, go to the left there. There was another loading area to the plan left over there. Now, talk about that for a minute there.
So again, that's another secondary point for refuse collection, as well as loading for the commercial tenants.
Okay, so the building is benefited by distinct and wide and available loading and unloading areas as for trash, for deliveries, for tenants, correct?
That is correct.
Okay. Go ahead, did you have any?
Yeah, just to touch quickly on parking. We are compliant with the parking requirements for the redevelopment plan. A total of 481 spaces are required for both the residential and retail portions of the development. We do have 495 spaces proposed onsite. We are also compliant with the electrical vehicle charging station spaces. Those are in compliance with state regulations. Important to note that all the residential spaces will be assigned, so the tenants will have an assigned space to them, whether it be a surface space or in the garage. Garage access will all be gated. Tenants will have a system similar to EZ Pass, where it's mounted in the windshield of their car. As they approach, the garage door will automatically go up. It's important to note that there will be some surface visitor spaces, but there will also be visitor spaces within the garage that operates through what they term a butterfly system. It operates through an intercom, where they can either page the tenant that they are going to visit, and they have the ability to open the garage door through an app and let them in, or page building management. They're allowed to open the garage door and let them in. Internal to the garage, there'll be assigned visitor spaces. And again, as I mentioned, the rest of the spaces will be assigned to residential tenants. So all the tenants within the building will have a specific space, so they'll know where they're going, whether it's a surface space, which garage entrance best suits them to enter the facility.
So in your opinion, the project as proposed has safe ingress and egress points, correct?
That's correct.
Adequate loading and unloading areas, correct?
That is correct.
Adequate tenant parking areas, correct?
That is correct.
Adequate spaces to park for the visitors to the site, correct?
That is correct.
Adequate spaces for retail to park as well?
That is correct.
Okay, is there anything else you want to tell the board on direct here?
That's all I have for direct. I tried to work in my responses to as many of Mr. Klein's comments as I could through my direct testimony, but I'd be happy to answer any questions that the board or Mr. Klein may have.
Okay, that's all I had for this witness on direct, Mr. Chairman. I tender him over to you, the board and the public.
I'll go to Mr. Klein in one second, but also the sides of the parking stalls are all compliant with the redevelopment plan as well?
They are, they're 9 by 18, which complies with the redevelopment plan.
Thank you. Mr. Klein?
Good evening, Mr. Chase. Thank you for your testimony, it was very thorough. I want to talk a little bit about the bifurcated driveway, the drop-off area. If a customer, a retail customer comes in, they pull around the loop and they start heading for the angled spaces, and all the angled spaces are full. Is there any direction to that customer to tell them how to get back to the site to find additional parking?
So there will be, and that's a great question, Mr. Klein, the, there will be spots onsite which are designated for retail patrons. Those are going to be located closest to the South Livingston Avenue frontage. Those spaces, all within that center access aisle, will be designated towards commercial patrons. You do have the ability, once you enter the site, whether you turn left or right in from South Livingston Avenue, you will have a clear line of sight as you traverse in an easterly direction to observe if those spaces are all full. And then, as I mentioned, there is that north-south cross-access aisle, which leads to more parking to serve those commercial tenants. So, and I apologize for not including that in my direct, but given the visibility of that area, I don't think you'll be in a situation where you're having patrons that'll circulate that area and then have to recirculate through South Livingston Avenue to find additional parking.
Right, that was my concern, to have to make a left out and a quick left back in would work. So even if there was a sign that said, make a right turn and go around the back of the property, it would be better. But like you said, as long as there's, the landscaping doesn't block my view as I'm coming in to see that the angled spaces are full or empty, then that's fine.
And we would also stipulate, Mr. Klein, to install onsite directional signage for parkers traversing the site parkers traversing the site, in appropriate locations as deemed appropriate by the board professionals.
Okay, good, thank you. Can you talk a little bit about the queuing on South Livingston Avenue, and how that might impact any of the driveways? Did you observe how long the queues got, how long they stayed there, when they cleared out? Was there any visibility issues as far as coming out of that driveway to look to your right, to be able to make a left turn, things like that?
Yeah, certainly, and that was really the primary focus of doing that additional gap analysis, to address some of the initial concerns that Mr. Klein provided as part of his first review of the application. As was noted, that queue exists along the frontage today. It extends back from the north, south, towards the subject property, towards Route 10, or towards our site driveways from Route 10. I would characterize that queue, the further south you get, the more of a rolling queue it is, meaning that the further back you go, cars are approaching that queue and slowing down. My observations are that, you know, that queue will extend back beyond these driveways at certain points, but then as the light turns green at Route 10, that queue will clear and provide vehicles with the opportunity to traverse in and out of this facility. One of the benefits of having multiple access points is it affords the tenants or patrons of this facility numerous opportunities to get into or out of the subject property. Being that most of these tenants are going to be residential in nature, they're going to be familiar with the prevailing conditions on the adjacent roadway network, and they're going to choose the access point that makes the most sense for them. They're going to know that if the queue is temporarily blocking the northern driveway, they have the opportunity to use the central or southern driveway to gain access to the site. So again, in my professional opinion, based on the results of the gap study, based on our observations, you know, we feel that those driveways can function adequately.
Would you be willing to restrict the northern driveway to a right-turn in, right-turn out? Because during my observations, particularly in the afternoon-peak hours, the queue is not rolling at that point. It's maybe rolling at the bifurcated driveway and south of that, but that northern driveway is in the thick of it, I think. So, and like you said, the residents know that if they're going to have to go left to go south, they're going to go out the southern driveway. So I don't think it'll impede the movement of traffic to make that a right-in, right-out only.
And traditionally, that used to, that northern driveway was, you know, ingress-only, back when the area had multi-tenants in it. And also, you'd have a police officer there, not all the time, but directing traffic, similar to what happens near the ShopRite. And, you know, it does back up there considerably.
I would like to offer, on behalf of the applicant, we're going to propose a stipulation. Mr. Chase, just identify the northern driveway, please, that Mr. Klein just spoke about. Okay, the applicant would stipulate as a condition of approval, should the board act favorably, it would be right-in, right-out only.
Good.
And that would have to be signed or marked in some appropriate fashion, as determined by the board professionals.
Yeah, we can certainly work with Mr. Klein to propose either a channelizing island and/or additional signage on both the South Livingston Avenue and site driveway approaches to that intersection, to make sure it's accurately depicted.
And we can make a Title 39, so they can enforce it, police can enforce it.
Correct.
Oh, another stipulation I didn't think of. The site is probably already subject to Title 39, but nevertheless, the applicant would stipulate to, if necessary or not yet done, to apply for Title 39 jurisdiction, which is my letter to the governing body, governing body adopting a resolution if it deems so appropriate. Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Klein.
Go ahead, finish.
It's County Road. I believe that right-in, right-out would have to be subject to County approval as well.
And Mr. Klein, I know that you have a little bit of timing problems, just let me know when you need to jump out for a second.
I'm good, and then the other... Oh, visitor parking. You said there'll be some inside, a lot of it's going to be outside. It adds up to roughly .5 unassigned parking spaces per unit.
It does.
So it meets RSIS.
That's correct.
Okay, good.
You made a statement that the turning radius is reviewed with the fire chief for our aerial piece?
That's correct. So as part of the civil engineering set that was submitted, the site engineer did provide the township's ladder truck for site circulation throughout the site. That was reviewed at the track meeting with the fire chief, and that was part of the site plan set.
Okay, and that middle section also?
That's correct.
Do you have the exhibit? Do you have sheet 20 and, I guess, 21, and the last few sheets of your plan set that you can pull up? Because I think some board member had a question about the back corners, about the turns in the back corners.
That is correct. So what you can see here is highlighted in green, it's again, it's the township, and it is the, this is the refuse truck, if you want to pull the fire truck out. That's a single unit. This is the fire truck. So again, as Mr. Klein mentioned, this does depict the township's ladder truck traversing the site. All of the driveways, obviously, you know, notwithstanding the fact that the firehouse is located directly opposite the southern access point. It can freely circulate the aisles around all three sides of the building, as well as circulate through the central bifurcated access point in the middle of the subject property.
And I believe you have a box truck and a garbage truck, and it also...
That's correct, Mr. Klein. We also have a refuse truck and a single-unit box truck showing access to those loading areas that I mentioned previously.
And then, this just hit me when the resident came up and talked about the fence and the buffering. Could we put signs up that say head-on parking only, so that way headlights don't glare if there is any glare of headlights shining eastward? They'd be facing west, facing the building, head-on parking only.
I'd certainly confer with the applicant, I don't think he would take issue to providing head-in parking only.
Let me just identify those spaces.
Yeah, the ones along the eastern side.
Yeah, eastern side of the...
Head-on parking only? Yes, yeah, we agree.
I think that's it. Yeah, I think that's it. That's it for me.
Thank you, Mr. Klein. Questions from the board?
Just one, and I think it's more just for the benefit of the public, confirming that from this site, there is no direct access to Arden Road, correct? You can only...
That is correct.
Okay, because earlier iterations, there was a potential, and I know there was understandable concern about people using that shortcut out to Arden, to Sherbrooke, and all that. But now, you'd have to leave there, make a left, and then make a left on Arden to get back to where you could just make a right anyways.
That is correct. The only accesses to and from the subject property are only from South Livingston Avenue.
Thank you.
The parking is as we see around the structure, or is it somewhere covered parking as well?
There is a garage that's within the building as well. So what you see on the exhibit that's before you is the surface parking. The architect is going to go through the floor plans, so you'll see the, bless you, you'll see the internal parking as well.
And the internal parking is secured, entrance is restricted to maybe a key holder or a card swipe or something like that?
Both entrances to the garage are controlled by garage doors. The tenants to the building, it's similar to an EZ Pass system, it mounts in your windshield, and there's a reader, so when they pull up to the garage door in either direction, it'll open automatically. And then, as I mentioned, there will be some visitor parking internal to that, but those visitors will have to be allowed access through butterfly system, which provides tenants of the building the ability to open the door for them, or the building manager to open the door for them. But those are the only people that have access to the internal parking.
Do you know how many spots are there in the internal parking?
I do. 310.
310, okay, and those are all assigned spots?
That's correct.
And you did mention that there is a 24/7 staff onsite. Is there somebody taking care of the parking, or security of the parking 24/7 also?
There's a building manager onsite, which will cover all those activities.
That one staff is taking care of it, okay. Would there be surveillance in the parking, in and around?
I'm going to defer to the architect as far as the security systems within the building.
Short answer is yes, but a subsequent witness will testify to that.
Thank you.
It's a couple of things, Mr. Chairman. I think I heard two seconds increase in the traffic pattern, and maybe it's a wrong reference. Can you please help clarify? You said if we consider this as a brand-new development, and that's what you're considering, not as a replacement of an existing commercial space. Mr. Klein's letters talks about five additional development, and the impact on the traffic on South Livingston Avenue. In that reference I heard, and maybe it is something to clarify, are you suggesting two seconds average increment on South Livingston Avenue? Is that what I heard, is that correct?
So I'll try to answer all those questions that you had in there.
Please, that's why I asked that question.
Certainly, you are correct with your initial statement that we assume this was new over vacant land, so we didn't take any credit for the former buildings that were there. We did include those five additional area developments in and around the subject property as additional background traffic. And then, yes, my reference to the two-second increase from the no-build-to-build condition, so the pre- and post-development analysis, that was specific to the operations of the signalized intersection of Route 10 and South Livingston Avenue, again assessing the overall operational conditions of that intersection.
So about 500 parking space, around that, 410 around that, in and out with commercial traffic. Once again, we are suggesting two-second increase at the intersection. I'm just trying to make it as plain as possible.
Certainly, and that's a great question. So we get this a lot, how do parking spaces correspond to overall traffic activity?
Meaning, that, sorry, that also means people going in and out, commercial traffic going in and out, it's not just parking spots, right? There's a traffic involved too.
That is correct. And so our traffic is based off the number of units proposed, as well as the square footage for the commercial portion of the facility. So two different metrics, residential units, commercial square footage. And what we focus on is the worst-case overall hour during those. So we're not saying that there's no activity at other points throughout the day, but we look at the adjacent, and this typically coincides, as it does here, with the weekday morning and evening commuter-peak hours, and then the peak hour during the midday for Saturday shopping hours. We focus on that one hour. So we look at the traffic activity during that one peak hour, based on, again, the number of units. With residential, you typically see that trip generation, it's spread, it's not concentrated over a single hour, like it would be for an office development, where everyone will typically show up between 8:00 a.m. and 9:00 a.m., leave between 4:00 and 5:00 p.m. Your residential traffic, it occurs over a much wider range. People start leaving for work at 6:00 a.m., they may leave all the way up till 9:00 a.m. So it's spread over a longer period of time. We focus on the single-highest hour. Similarly, in the evening, people will start arriving home at 3:30, 4:00 p.m., all the way till 6:30. So again, it's spread over a greater time. But again, we're just focusing on that single hour. So we're not suggesting that, you know, the total parking onsite, that the trip generation in Table 4 represents all that activity throughout the day, it's just that single-highest hour.
That's a snapshot of what you're seeing as probably the most impacted...
That's exactly it, sir.
...hour. Maybe a question to Mr. Klein in reference to that. And I thank you, your letter was very clear, and a lot of points in here. What is your opinion in terms of, I think you raised two points, which caught my attention. Second, we'll talk about it, which is the spread-out parking spaces, including ADA and EV, EV parking spots. But focusing on the traffic itself, when we add that right-only addendum, or the stipulation that we talked about, is that going to, sort of, how it's going to help? And can you articulate a little bit more in terms of spread-out peak hours, morning and evening, and what would be the kind of impact we are looking at with that additional stipulation?
So the right-turn in, right-turn out for the northern driveway is more of a safety issue? If you're trying to make a left turn from that driveway, and you're looking to the right, you'd be looking through two lanes of queued-up traffic coming from Route 10 on South Livingston Avenue. So you won't be able to see through that to safely make a left turn out. So that's why we're saying, make it a right-turn in only, right-turn out only. So that's one issue. The left turns that would come out of that driveway will now be relocated to the, some of them to the center driveway, primarily to the southern driveway, which I would think, the way they distributed their traffic, if you want to go south, you'd leave at the southern end of the site to make a left, and if you want to go north, you'd leave at the northern end and make a right turn. So I think it's already happening that way in their analysis. So by making it a right-turn in, right-turn out only, it's just for safety issues there. As far as the distribution of the traffic, as Mr. Chase said, that's what we do as traffic engineers. We look at the worst hour of the day, 7:30 to 8:30, and then we put on the peak hour traffic of the development in that same hour. And again, it could be spread out, and it actually could not be the same hour. So it's really the worst-case morning hour, PM peak hour, and Saturday peak hour. As far as their analysis goes, they did not include the traffic, and I believe at least the Dunkin' Donuts, there were quite a few things that are still active there, they didn't take any credit for the traffic coming in and out of there. So that was pretty conservative, I would say. They could have certainly counted the site driveways, subtracted those numbers out, and then done their analysis, and they probably would have ended up with better levels of service even than that.
Thank you, thank you, that's helpful. Now, the second point is on the parking spot. So we have EV and we have ADA. One of the suggestions was ADA spread-out, underground, outside, you know, we have, you know, special-needs units in the area as well. And generally speaking, you know, ADA-required parking spot, or ADA parking spots are important to have, you know, accessibility is important for them.
Critical, yeah.
As well as EV. Can you expand on the spread-out of it, how accessible it'll be? And other part of EV is, is EV spots only available to the tenants and the residents of the site, or is it available to, let's say, people coming in and out?
Sure.
How are you visualizing that?
Some of this is going to come from Cory. Some of it is going to come from the architect. As we get into the building, he may know, but go ahead, Cory.
Yeah, I can, and I'll just briefly touch on it, and again, as Mr. Orth mentioned, our architect will really go through the internal floor plans, so you'll get a better idea. But there are, it's a little bit harder to see on this rendering that's before you, because they're done in black, so they don't stand out as much as being in blue. But there are ADA spaces, so there are two ADA spaces located, words are being currently circled right now, in the ingress portion of that central access point. Those are located directly adjacent to the special-needs units that you mentioned earlier. There's also two additional angled ADA spaces, again, intended to serve the retail commercial tenants. If you go to the north, there's two additional ADA access spaces, again, located directly adjacent to those commercial tenants, intended to serve that. There is, there are seven ADA spaces located within the garage, which are not depicted on this, but you'll be able to see it once the internal floor plans are shown. That does satisfy the International Building Code for the internal ADA requirements within the garage. There are, as you mentioned, there are EV spaces, which are located along the eastern building facade, and there are some additional EV spaces that are located within the parking garage. The ones within the parking garage will only be accessible to the tenants and/or their visitors. And then again, as I mentioned, there are some surface EV spaces located adjacent to the eastern building facade.
And the architect's going to testify. We've located the EV charging stations within the garage closest to the access or ingress points to the garage.
And that was a recommendation of the fire chief.
But we'll let the architect testify to that, though.
Thank you.
Quick question, just because you mentioned that you did your analysis, which I appreciate was conservative, and Mr. Klein alluded to it, that you compared this, and you didn't take any credit for the existing, but do you have an opinion, or did you even do any rough back-of-the-napkin? If the existing amount of square footage of retail space was back at its former glory, fully occupied, how would that compare to this, traffic-wise?
Yeah, actually, I do have those numbers, and anticipating this question would come up. So focusing on the three critical peak hours, again, assuming this is just an IT, Institute of Transportation Engineers to IT comparison, so apples-to-apples comparison. In the weekday morning, and just to note too, the travel patterns would be slightly different. Obviously, in the morning, it's primarily residential, it's exiting. Where commercially, you have more of a split. But I'm just looking at the total numbers into and out of the site during each of these three peak periods. The weekday morning, it's approximately 25 additional trips, so that would be approximately one trip every two to three minutes. And then when you get to the weekday evening and the Saturday peak hours, it's actually a reduction in trips when compared to the former use. So even though we are proposing residential units and a small portion of additional commercial, when you compare it to the former commercial space and that supplemental office space on the second story, it would actually be a reduction in the evening and Saturday peak hours. It's approximately 50 trips during each.
Thank you.
Seeing none from our professionals?
You're basing the parking on 19,650 square feet of retail space, correct?
That is correct.
And do you have a comparison what the existing retail space is on this site?
It's approximately 46,000 square feet.
Substantial reduction.
Yes, in retail, that's correct.
Any questions from the public for the traffic engineer? Oh, you saw it, you were beat out.
Michael Durochuk again, Sherbrooke Parkway. Mr. Klein, you answered one of my questions, because I was very concerned about egress on these three, on South Livingston Avenue, and they're all going to be the south and the middle, you can turn right or left as you're coming out, I assume, and the northern one, right-only. Okay. you're coming out, I assume, and the northern one, right only. Okay. You also mentioned, you lost me a little bit about the gap between the East Cedar Street light and the Livingston Center light. The street, Arden Road and Sherbrooke Parkway have been a traditional cut-through to avoid Livingston Center. And maybe you could help me understand how an additional 300 cars, even if one-quarter of them are leaving at 7:00 or 8:00 o'clock or 9:00 o'clock in the morning, and coming back in at 3:00 or 4:00 in the afternoon, how that's going to boil down to one or two seconds in delay at the light? The other question I had is, did you take into consideration in your traffic analysis, what, how much traffic would be diverted, Arden Road, Sherbrooke Parkway, during the peak hours?
So, I'll answer your first question first. So, we use analytical software to conduct these intersection evaluations, and, you know, we use the same software to evaluate it with and without the development. So, that's how we come up with whatever that average increase, increase in vehicle delay is that I testified to previously. So, that was based on this industry standard analysis that we perform, and again, that takes the existing traffic volumes, compares it to the proposed, and sees what the differential is. So, that's how we came to that conclusion. You know, given that the, where the site is located, and the access that we're providing along South Livingston Avenue, you know, we're anticipating that South Livingston Avenue, and that was one of the primary reasons for not providing a direct connection to Arden Road, so that we would not encourage any of the cut-through traffic there. Given that it's all located directly to South Livingston Avenue, we'd encourage residents to use that as their primary ingress and egress to the subject property.
No, I understand that. But, even without that egress onto Arden Road, a lot of the residents use Arden Road and Sherbrooke Parkway to bypass the center. And if there's a blockage of any kind because cars are leaving your development, whether it's a two-second delay or a 10-second delay, there's gonna be a lot more traffic going down Arden Road and Sherbrooke Parkway to bypass that blockage. I'm just asking, if you took into consideration how much traffic might be diverted to that side road?
And that's a great question, sir. So, based on our analysis, and based on the results of the gap study, we're not anticipating that there will be a blockage in traffic occurring as a result of people either trying to get into or out of this facility. So, based on that, it's not gonna be any significant increase in the amount of time that people are waiting along the subject property frontage along South Livingston Avenue, and that would not result in additional people utilizing those existing streets to cut through or bypass the site.
Remains to be seen. Thank you.
37 Sherbrooke Parkway.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, good evening, council and planning board. My concern is about...
Your name?
Oh, Jesse.
Jesse...
Do I need to give my last name?
Yeah.
Okay. A-gr-i-s-s. And my concern is also about the cut-through between Sherbrooke and Arden. I live on Sherbrooke and Arden, and regularly I see cars passing down, using it as a cut-through, exceeding 35 miles an hour. Just about two hours ago, I was getting in my car, and there was a car zooming past me, I estimated about 40 miles an hour. And how 300 more cars are gonna be introduced into this town, how are we gonna combat the speeding and the erratic driving? Because nothing has been done yet. So, how do you plan to compete and eliminate the speeding and the erratic driving, not only on this street, but the, most of the town, most of the streets that are affected?
Those are great questions, and we certainly appreciate your concern. Unfortunately, I think, you know, speeding and things like that, that really falls out of the purview of the planning board. That's more of a township council issue, unfortunately. You know, there's certain measures that can be done by the Township Council recommendations, whether it's speed humps, traffic calming, other items. But, it really falls out of the purview of what we're proposing. What it's our job to do is make sure that we have adequate access to the site, so that we don't encourage any additional cut-through traffic. And that's really what you heard my testimony
Yeah.
earlier this evening, was we're laying the site out in a manner such that it provides safe and efficient access to discourage anyone from having to use those existing residential streets to cut through more. But, I would certainly encourage you to take your concerns to the Township Council, and let them know your feelings, and certainly let them know your experiences.
Yeah, I've done that.
Yeah, so if I can just, if I can just follow up, I think, because I think they're great, they're great questions. And, you know, one of the, you know, one of the benefits of having, you know, the town manager sit on the planning board is also to hear these concerns. And, I'm sorry? And a council member. To hear these concerns, and I think they're important to raise. And, look, you know, I've also, you know, Dr. Reber, myself, you know, we've served on the governing body as well for many years, and we've heard these concerns as well for many years. And I know that the police department addresses it as best they can, they will continue to. But I think that you have, you know, people here on this board listening, that will then certainly address this with, you know, with the appropriate people in town, you know, to, you know, to come up with other, maybe perhaps other traffic calming devices, but to make sure that, you know, I think that, what, you know, I think one of the most important, you know, jobs of the town council is public safety. And that includes vehicular public safety as well.
Jesse, can we have your address?
Thank you.
We didn't get your address.
It's the same as mine, 42 Sherbrooke.
So, as the chairman brought up, yes, I have taken these to the council, as our council members here know. They've been dodging questions and dodging responsibility for two years. No, this like really isn't funny. Our streets are dangerous, like for pedestrians. I kinda have to like fear for my life at this point. There are people regularly driving upwards of 35 miles an hour on our street, and not only have I been bringing this up at most of the town council meetings for two years, no action has been done.
Okay, well, again, right now, and you'll get a chance at the end to, you know, any concerns in favor of or against the application. Right now, I really just wanna focus on, you know, and we heard your concerns, of course, and we have also a member of the council here, and also the town manager here. You know, but if you have more of those concerns, I would save them for when we take testimony under oath at the end. And right now, just really focusing on questions for the witness. That's a process and procedure of these hearings. But, we certainly thank you. And I don't wanna cut you off. You have other questions, please. I don't wanna cut you off here for the witness.
No, I'm supporting him, because it is true that we have been doing that at this since 2022, and he's kind of a broken record.
Right.
But, he's very frustrated, and I'm his mom.
Sure.
And I see it every day. Seconds, he's walking into the street, and there's a car zooming by, literally missing him by seconds. And we have come before this council many times about the speeding issues. And there was a speeding sign put on my property. That was the, that was the resolution, I guess, a 25-mile...
Again, we're kinda getting a little bit off topic.
Okay, but I'm just saying, the placating, you know...
Certainly, there are members from the governing body that are hearing it.
We need someone to come out and seriously come and talk to us about this. We're kind of tired of having these conversations and having nothing happen. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if I just may briefly add, that as a past president of the Board of Education, it's a very proud moment for me to see a middle-schooler take the mic and opine. So, good job, Jesse, very proud. That's why people come to Livingston.
Jim Devlin, 41 Sherbrooke Parkway. In, two years ago, we, a lot of people came out, and they were concerned about congestion, that the proposed site, the density is much higher than anything else on Livingston Avenue and Mount Pleasant Avenue, right? This just far exceeds that. We had a lot of concerns. And I think 195 units were initially approved, and the, and then the, you know, the special services and the other housing was gonna be located off-site. Now, you guys are asking, I guess that was rejected, to increase instead of like sticking with 195 and saying, the affordable housing will just be a part of that 195, we're gonna increase it to 230, is that what it is? How many units?
It's, so, I'll defer to Mr. Orth, but we're, the proposed density, the proposed unit counts in conformance with the redevelopment plan, so we're not asking for a variance or an increase to what was permitted for the redevelopment plan.
226. Did you guys take into account the increase, how much traffic would be increased by increasing the number of units? I mean, we're already concerned about the, look, the traffic.
We did. So, our study's represented on the application that's before you this evening, so it's the 226 units.
So, and just, I would like to, you know, bring up, I know that this is not about traffic and the cut-throughs, but it's already a problem with the community, right? And this is a large proposed area, highly dense, and we already have a trouble with Sherbrooke and Arden, and the other surrounding towns. Two years ago, in the fall, people came and they said, "I avoid Livingston Avenue and Mount Pleasant Avenue."
Do you have a specific question for the witness? Because at the end, you'll get, you'll get this opportunity.
Yeah, no, I, yes, yes. So, my, my question is gonna, was, what's the impact? But also, what is our, what is gonna be in place? How do we not see, how can you say, or, actually, let me, I'll take, I'll give you a question. In part of your traffic study, when you say, "Ah, it's only gonna be a two-second increase," when at 7:30 in the morning, it's already backed up on Mount Pleasant Avenue, is part of the reason why it's only a two-second increase is because people, traffic diverts, right? Because people are gonna, more people are gonna cut through Sherbrooke, more people are gonna go through Broad Lawn to get to the schools when the schools are all filling in. Because you can't get out of Sherbrooke Parkway at 7:20 in the morning because people are backed up at Mount Pleasant already.
And that's a great question, sir. So, we're assuming that they're using the primary roadway network. We're not making the assumption that additional people are gonna divert or cut through, and therefore reducing our, the existing traffic volumes. We're just surcharging our traffic on top of what's there, assuming that it all remains as-is.
Okay. I just, oh, go ahead. Devlin, D-E-V-L-I-N?
Thank you. Hi, everybody.
Welcome.
Jim Metropolis. I'm one of the owners at 38 to 44 South Livingston Avenue, the commercial property across the street.
Did you get that?
Jim Metropolis, M-E-T-R-O-P-O-U-L-O-S. Multiple owners, I'm one of them. I got several questions. First, can you just point out to me the main entrance and exit? Where is that in relation to the structures on the other side of South Livingston Avenue right now?
Which structures are you referring to?
Like, what's opposite that, that entrance and exit area? Is that the emergency department driveway? Is that the fire department driveway? What is opposite that?
Yes, so you can see... So, this is the aerial exhibit, which is, I believe, Sheet 2 in the existing site plan set. So, I don't, Mr. Orth, I don't think we need to mark this as an exhibit because...
We don't need to mark this.
No, we already have that.
Yeah. Mr. Metropolis, the aerial you're looking at obviously doesn't show the proposed development, so he's gonna estimate from your questions. Go ahead.
Okay.
Yeah, but you can see, outlined in red with the PIQ in the center, that's the property in question. Again, the two prior commercial buildings, as I mentioned, to the south, and you can see the existing firehouse, the striping associated with the firehouse access. And then as you go north along South Livingston Avenue, you can see the existing commercial properties located opposite the subject property.
Right, okay. So, is the future entrance and exit basically where the current Dunkin' Donuts entrance and exit is, or is it gonna be further to the south? That's what I'm trying to...
So, that entrance and exit is largely located in the existing location that it is today. That bifurcated driveway that I spoke of, that has the landscaping in the middle, largely in the same location as the access directly adjacent to the Dunkin' Donuts.
Pretty much Dunkin' Donuts and the old Walgreens.
Walgreens, yeah. That's correct, sir.
Okay, okay. So, and, man, I, you lost me on a bunch of testimony, too. I thought I was a smart guy, but I didn't get a lot of that. It sounds like traffic is determined safe or reasonable by what it does to the speed, or the timing of traffic on South Livingston Avenue, right? So, one, two-second difference, it's, you're basically determining the volume, the volume change and what it does to the volume and the speed on South Livingston Avenue. Is that correct?
It's not necessarily speed, sir, it's average vehicle delay, so we, that's what we're looking at.
Okay. So, you, does that mean you don't take into consideration what left and right turn onto South Livingston does, particularly when there are driveways opposite this development that are also looking to enter and exit? Is that pattern taken into consideration at all in the work you do?
It is. So, we'll look at the existing driveways located opposite the subject property. And again, that was one of the primary reasons that Mr. Klein had asked for the gap study to really assess what those impacts were of left, both in and out of the subject property. There are multiple commercial driveways located across the street. So, again, you know, keeping the driveway in its current location, or largely in its current location, we felt was the best option in this scenario.
So, so, the change in the volume exiting the future development, and the current volume that exits the parking lots across the street was deemed to be normal, safe, the addition, was it quantified in any way?
Yeah, we look at the access to determine if it's safe and efficient, and that's what really, it's two-part. It's, you know, you look at the site distance, you look at the queuing that we've been speaking of, you look at adjacent access points, and we need to confirm that the access in the future would be both safe and efficient. And based on the results of the analysis, the available site distance, looking at the queuing, the gap study, all those things come into play, and we've determined that it's both safe and efficient.
But, do you, did you quantify the volume that enters South Livingston Avenue from the other businesses on the opposite, and what your, and quantified your volume and how it's just gonna change? Because you're gonna have multiple people looking at each other across South Livingston Avenue, looking to enter South Livingston Avenue. Was that taken into consideration in the work you do?
It is, and that's all part of the gap study. So, we look at the existing volumes on South Livingston Avenue, the operational conditions at those driveways opposite the site. They're taking up some of those existing gaps, so we don't include that in our gap analysis as an available gap, because it's already been taken.
And, you know, someone mentioned before, blockage, and that you're not counting any existing exits from the Dunkin' Donuts. But, anyone who spent any time staring at South Livingston Avenue there, one car exiting South Livingston Avenue, most times of the day creates some amount of blockage. So, so, trying to understand the volume, and I'm all for the development, I'm just trying to understand if we really understand what that driveway in the place where it is does to the, not the speed or the time it takes you to get from 10 to the next street, but what happens in the middle where you have multiple people trying to enter South Livingston Avenue? I'm just trying to understand whether that, how that was taken into consideration. Because exits from Dunkin' Donuts right now, as little as they are, causes blockage plenty of times during the course of the day. And we know it's, what, 1/50th, 1/10th, 1/20th of what it's gonna be. Okay. So, I think, so, you kinda took it into consideration, but it doesn't sound like you quantified, quantified it.
No, we did. We quantified the available gaps in traffic, in that we found that it was many multiples over what our traffic is gonna generate.
Okay. The, the safe, determined, someone said, this was determined that safe ingress and egress. Just curious, what's the definition of safe ingress and egress? Is that a quantifiable definition of safety, or is it, your opinion, is it qualitative?
It's subjective. My opinion as a professional engineer.
Okay. Okay, so, again, there are driveways opposite the structure, and they're not easy to deal with, affectionately called South Livingston Speedway, by the way.
Jesse?
South Livingston Avenue is really South Livingston Speedway. But, I'm all for, I can't wait for it to be built, actually. But, really, the, the volume, when you have driveways staring at each other, and South Livingston Avenue is in the middle, someone needs to count cars, is I guess what I'm saying.
Thank you.
Just one follow-up, though, to that question, because I think the gentleman is largely concerned about the center driveway. And currently, the center driveway is by far the main and most heavily-used driveway. In this situation, would you envision the majority of the traffic are the residents, correct?
That's correct.
And most of them will not be using the center driveway, is that correct?
That's correct. You have the southern access point, which will be your initial access if you're coming north along South Livingston Avenue. And certainly, anybody turning left in will, that's the easiest and most direct path to the both parking garages, to the one on the northern building facade, and to the one on the southern building facade as well, so.
Thank you.
And that section is two-way, is that right?
That's correct.
And left turn...
That is correct, sir.
Is allowed there.
Correct.
Any other questions from the public? And any others from the board or our professionals? Seeing none? I think we're done. Why don't we, can we, why don't we take a...
I was on mute for a while. You wanna take a break for a second?
Yeah, why don't we take like a five-minute break?
Great, thank you very much. Great, thank you very much.
All right, welcome back. We have everybody?
Yeah. All right, we're all set.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and the board. I typically save this for my closing, but I just wanna say, it's just, as a practitioner, it is a real pleasure to be in a community like this, where the folks come out, they care, the board cares, the applicant cares, and we all work together to create the best community that we can. And I just thank everyone who's here tonight for everything that has been said so far and working together to create something better on this site. So I'll stop there.
Thank you.
And I'll bring up my last witness here.
And thank you for listening to the concerns of the residents and, you know, and certainly, you know, considering them and putting them into your plan.
Absolutely. So my last witness this evening is my architect, and actually, my last witness on the application is my architect, Jack Raker, from Minno and Wasco.
Do you raise your right hand, sir? You swear to testimony given this matter be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Please give us your full name and spell the last name.
My name is Jack Raker, R-A-K-E-R.
Okay, Jack, I know we've worked together many times, but please give the board, members of the public, a brief overview of your professional qualifications, confirming your licenses are in good standing and effective in the state of New Jersey. Couple of towns where you have been qualified as an expert in the field of architecture as well, thank you.
Sure. I'm a principal at Minno and Wasco Architects and Planners. I've been practicing in this field of architecture, residential, multifamily, mixed-use, for about 25 years. I, my license is in good standing, and I've testified before numerous boards, before the state of New Jersey, Chatham, Milburn, Verona, South Amboy, East Brunswick, Jersey City.
That's good. That's good. I so tender him as an expert in the field of architecture, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Raker, before we get going, you prepared the plans in connection with this application, correct?
I did.
Okay, and you prepared the exhibits or oversaw the preparation of the exhibits you're presenting this evening?
Yes.
Okay, please walk the board through your presentation of the architecture for the project, thank you.
Absolutely. Are we gonna have to mark the whole presentation in as evidence? These are colored versions of the submitted plans.
This is in a one-packet set?
In one-packet set.
Each page or the whole set? Okay, so then, if we may, this would be a five, Jackie? Architectural, what do you wanna call this, rendered architectural set?
Yeah, rendered architectural set.
Okay, can you give me a date, please?
Michael, I don't know if you have it. August 5th, 2024, 2025.
Okay, 8/20. 8/5/2025. Okay, Mr. Raker, take it away, please.
Sure. Michael, could you go to the first site plan? First thing I wanna point out, the, all the exhibits you're gonna see, the building orientation has been rotated 180 degrees. So South Livingston Avenue will be at the top of the page. With the previous exhibits, you've seen it at the bottom of the page. I'm not gonna spend much time in this slide, we spent a lot of time on the site plan, but just wanted to orient you as to the building orientation. We can go to the ground floor, Michael, thank you. So this is the first floor of the building. First of all, I wanna just hit a couple of quick items here. The building is four slash five stories, it's sort of bermed into a hill. We have some grading on site that we have to make up. So when you're looking at this exhibit here, you can kinda see where that white area exists. That parking garage that you see there is bermed into the ground. The grade to the right, or to the north, is actually about 10 to 12 feet higher than the grade down by where the retail is toward the bank. So in this exhibit, the blue is the retail area. We have approximately 18,520 square feet of retail. It's spread and it steps across the front. We've kept the active uses toward South Livingston Avenue. So all that garage that you see there in plan is not visible at all from South Livingston Avenue, just the access points. It's buried to the right, and it's shielded by active uses such as the lobby and amenity and the retail to the left.
Is that different than the retail square footage we were given by the traffic engineer?
That is, that should not be the difference.
What is the figure you gave us?
I gave 18,520.
Mr. Orth, didn't the, I think the engineer, the traffic engineer gave us a different amount.
I'm sorry, I have a written report of 19,650. Jack, what did you just say for the retail?
18,520.
Okay, so what is the, let's resolve the number now.
It could be a net and gross number, it's that small of a difference.
It's the back of house, it's the back of house for the retail?
Most likely, that's what it is, yes. That there's a small portion of trash that serves the retail that maybe is not included. This is a, this is a leasable square footage number.
I see it, okay. It's the...
So we have...
The gray area, that's what it is there.
And a little portion, when we get to the other side, there's a small portion to the right there as well that was not considered in this 18,5 number.
Okay, so the architect is speaking to the leasable square footage. There is a portion, which we had marked on the engineering plans and on the application, which includes trash, mechanicals, so on and so forth, for the retail square footage. That's the minor differential there.
So as I said before, we do have some grading here that changes. That's why the building is a slash four and five stories, depending upon where you're measuring it from, looking at it from on site. As you're down toward the retail, you're gonna have the taller portions of the building, the five stories. And on back toward the back, I'll show some perspectives later, you'll see how grade goes up and buries the garage, the parking garage. We have a significant amount of amenity. I'm gonna go through all their locations, total of about 14,800 square feet of amenity, plus or minus. And included here, we have two levels of garage and 310 total parking spaces in the garage. The garages are not contiguous, they stack on top of one another, but we use grade to access the different areas of the garage. So we have the main lobby centered right at that center courtyard, that sort of pinkish area in plan, that's our amenity and lobby areas. The lobby's right at the end of that arc, that curved feature where there's the drop-off. We have a series of loading areas that are served internally through the building. There's one here, move-in and access for retail. Down here, move-in, the loading area. And when I get to the up, the next level up, there's one over to the right. Garage access is here, under the building, for vehicles and residences.
We gotta get you an electric pointer there, I'll tell you what.
I don't think it works on these, on these screens. We also have the trash termination rooms. We also have the trash termination rooms. They end here, and there is one over there as well. They'll, there are trashes brought out, and as was testified earlier, at specific times planned and scheduled. We had a comment earlier that the EV, EV charging stations need to be moved closer to the main entry of the garage, so we moved all of those EV charging stations closer to the entry of the garage. That was one of the comments from the fire department, and we accommodated that, no problem. We have two access points. So we do have the main access point here. We also have a special needs access point over here that corresponds to some accessible parking. That has all been seen by the DDD, and they've approved the locations and our layout from a safety standpoint and from an access standpoint for the special needs.
And Jack, while you're still on the slide, our, one of our prior witnesses testified to the loading areas. Michael, just highlight, let's start out with the retail pad there. Go ahead. There's that loading area right there, and we have ingress and egress to the building point right there. Okay, so that works right there.
As well, move-in, and we have loading for the, for the retail.
Okay, and then go plan south now. There's another loading area right there, another ingress point to the building.
Correct, and refuse here as well.
Okay.
All right across the loading.
Perfect, and you already highlighted the ADA parking stalls, which also have an access point go up? Yeah, Jack already highlighted it right there. Correct there, and there's a direct access point.
Across from the lobby for the special needs.
And that's ADA accessible, correct?
Correct. The access to that entry is ADA accessible.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay. Michael, I think we're done with this sheet. Oh, wait, I do want to point out, and I'll go back. These are two-level units. I'll show them to you in elevation. They're, they look like townhomes. They have a little special stoop out to the sidewalk, but they also, they are also accessed internally. So you can park in the garage, go into the hallway, and access those units. The living level's down below, and then the bedroom level's up above. We can go to the next slide, Michael. Thanks. So I'm gonna start with the top right corner. We have additional retail there because the grade is stepping up as you go up South Livingston Avenue. We have additional retail that hides that garage below and some of the residential units behind. We also have an additional parking level. That parking level is accessed on the back corner of the site. As grade slopes up, we get access to that level that's 10 feet up, and the parking garage is almost nearly buried, the lower parking garage is almost nearly buried at this level. It's exposed down here, but as you get up, it's, it's almost fully, fully buried. So at this level, we have two amenity and outdoor amenity spaces. That was gone over by the landscape architect, and we have an amenity that fronts that pool. We also have another amenity that is fully enclosed in that area there. There's access point, two access points in and out of those areas. Very popular areas to spend some time. That internal one's a little more quiet. The pool area has a little bit more of an active use as well.
Can you, can you tell us about that pool? I mean, the neighbors were worried about, is there a fence or something that you can't really look over and look at?
Yeah, so I'll go over that when we, I'll look at the elevation view, but we are, we do plan to build a wall so that the visibility out of that space is, you won't be able to see. We'll raise the parapet wall so you won't be able to see out. And at this, we also do have a bike room location, and we also have the additional loading area, additional move-in, and some other utility spaces on that side. Okay, I think we can go to sheet three, Michael. So now we get to, there's another level of amenity courtyard. This happens at the next level up. That's this one back here. We have a small amenity space off of that courtyard that, you know, all the amenities that we have in these buildings are, we'll have club rooms, we'll have co-work space, fitness areas, gaming areas, many lounges, places for people to work. A lot of times, people who work from home don't like to work in their apartment. They'll go out into these spaces, these common spaces, and get work done, and they feel like they're more in an open, public office environment. And again, I just want to go back. So the units wrap all around these courtyards. You'll see on the next slide, let's go up to the next level plan. This is where it's entirely units. There's no amenity at this level. And then, Michael, you can go to the next slide. We do cut back the building at the tallest level. That reduces some of the height along here where the grade is lowest, so that, that allows the building to appear a little bit lower from South Livingston Avenue, where the grade is lowest.
And so the building effectively steps back away from South Livingston Avenue. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. And you're working with the grade to reduce the visible height of the building, bearing the parking garage to levels to reduce the overall visual impact of the, of the structure, correct?
Correct.
Okay, go ahead.
Next level is the roof level. We're showing all the mechanical locations up here. We generally keep them to the center of the roof. They're only about 30 inches to 36 inches high. We have parapet walls that come up. None of this stuff will be visible from anywhere in the surrounding area. It's all kept deep in.
Okay, and as the board will recall, we, or I stipulated at the initial hearing, any testing of a mechanical equipment, which typically occurs once a week, will be done during the middle of the day, during off-peak hours, will comply with state decibel requirements as well.
Correct. Let's go to the next slide, Michael. So I'm gonna, the next few slides I'm gonna show you are gonna be perspective views, but before I hit that, I just wanted to tell you, we're using all high-quality materials here. Cast stone, brick, fiber cement siding, metal railings, metal canopies, very high-quality materials. And when I show you the renderings, you'll see that it really comes together very cohesively. Let's start the next view. So this is a view of the building, looking into that main entry courtyard. You can see it's the, we've coordinated with landscaping. You can see it's well landscaped. We've got great, high-quality materials with the cast stone, the brick, the panels, the fiber cement panels in between, the fiber cement bays that pop out. But you can see we've created all these active, active uses right along the front, right along South Livingston Avenue. That's all the retail. But you kind of see how it steps up. This retail's somewhat taller than the retail down in this corner. It's hidden by trees. We've done a lot, great job at planting the site, so, you know, you're not seeing a lot of that, the, the building facade. But we've accented that entry point. We've created a nice, strong symmetrical entry that really accents where to go when you, when you drive up that, that entry courtyard. Next. This is a view, a little bit further north on South Livingston Avenue, looking back towards the retail on the southern side. Again, well-activated streetscape. You can go to the, oh, I'm sorry, no, this is the, this is the, the corner, it's the corner even further north. If you're all the way at the northern end, looking back at that lower retail, the plaza's down here, that entry motor court is down there.
This is the intersection which we previously stipulated would be right in, right out.
Correct.
The northly end of the site there.
Correct. Again, nice detailing, brick detailing, a lot of reveals, created a lot of nice details that we think will really add a great, great feel to the building. Next one, Michael? This is when you're standing on the south side, looking back at the townhomes. The townhomes that I pointed out previously are the duplex units. You can see those are here. They have the stoops that access them, and then this is the drive under the building that connects that center motor court. Again, great brick detailing, great quality materials. Next one. So this one tells that story of the grade change at the back. This is looking back at the garage on the southern edge, looking north to the right. You can see this is the garage level here, well landscaped. This is the amenity deck up here. While we're not showing it here, we're gonna raise this parapet up high enough so that it's not visible looking out from that courtyard.
So, go ahead, describe it. I'm gonna make the stipulation then.
Sure. So you're, you're seeing it here. You can, it's, we're gonna raise this parapet. Right now, we're showing the railing. We'll raise this up so that it's a solid wall, goes all the way back so that people on that terrace can't look out into the neighborhood.
Right. So there was a gentleman who had inquired about the shielding of that pool area from the residences to the rear. We're gonna stipulate to raise that parapet. Do we have a general estimation of that?
We'll work with the landscape architect.
Landscape architect.
We want to create a feature wall, maybe, when we get there. Rather than just raise it up, we might want to create a small feature wall and do something on the other side that, that is pleasurable for the tenants when they're looking at, at the wall.
Okay, so in coordination with the board's professionals, should the board act favorably, we would raise that rear parapet wall to provide some shielding of that amenity area?
And then this next slide shows you the second level garage as it steps up and that upper level terrace, but you can see how grade gradually goes up and, and, and totally buries the, the garage, the larger garage that we've, we've very cleverly hidden. And then the last slide, Michael, we have all of our signage. Signage for each use complies with the redevelopment ordinance. And that concludes my testimony, unless there's any questions?
And the only thing I add, we do anticipate some directional signage, which we had talked about earlier on in the hearing, the direct traffic. These are not sign variances that we're talking about. These are in-site directional signage. I had nothing further on direct from Mr. Raker. I tender, tender him over to the board.
Can we talk about the number of dens and weather? I know the redevelopment plan, I think, called for a certain percentage of units with dens. Can we go, can we go through that?
Sure. The requirement for a minimum of 40% one-bedrooms, we comply with 41.2% of the one-bedrooms. There's also a requirement of, of those one-bedrooms, 45% need to be one-bedroom dens. Forty, a maximum of 45 can be one-bedroom dens. We're at 44.1. And the two-bedroom den ratio is required to be, of the two bedrooms, you can't have more than 45%. We have 42.9%.
So if I can step in on here. The redevelopment plan, when discussing dens, is actually part of a paragraph that's describing market rate units. The applicant is seeking to create a percentage of dens based on market rate plus affordable units. So in our letter, we reviewed it, and we said it was a deviation, as the intent was to limit the number of market rate units that would have dens. So the applicant is stating that they don't need a deviation, but our letter indicates, and I agree, that this would require deviation to permit the number of dens proposed.
Do we have the actual number of the units, not just percentages?
Sure.
There were 79 market rate one-bedroom units, 41 will contain dens, correct? Am I, am I getting the numbers right?
If you're, if you're discussing just market rate, that's correct. So if you're of, there's 79 total, and 41 will be, have dens, if they're market rate, if you're only taking into account market rate units.
And 116 two-bedroom market rate units, 57 will contain dens, which is about 49%. I guess the other issue was, I guess, doors?
Yes, the, the applicant is seeking, the redevelopment plan does not anticipate doors associated with dens, to prevent them from becoming additional bedrooms. The applicant is seeking to permit dens, permit doors on the dens that are like glass doors.
Right.
So it is, it is a requested waiver, and it is for the board to review.
Yeah, and the reason, I mean, it's not that we want, the lease is restrictive to the number of people that can be in the apartments. The reason the glass doors are there is just to create a little bit of privacy. Usually, that person in the den may be working, maybe want to watch TV while somebody else in the apartment wants to sleep. We just find that it's a better use to have the doors, and it's really more for noise, not for privacy. Like I said, we, we would put glass.
Yeah, I think, I think in situations where we've allowed doors on dens, we've required them to be somewhat, either see-through, open. I'll get the thoughts of the board and see what they think.
Yeah, and I know...
Obviously, the intent and the references shall be open to the adjacent space. I guess the question is a door, no door. Obviously, our concern is that it not turn into a bedroom. I think we have in the past allowed French doors, glass doors, visibility through that would not be conducive to, and they already cannot have closets, so that kind of takes away from being bedrooms as well, so.
Yeah, see-through maybe, yeah, see-through to, to Chairman your point. See-through maybe, sort of, you know, it reduces that possibility of making it into, turning into a room. So, but the other deviation is, is what is concerning. So maybe in terms of numbers, what it would be with and without deviation.
So...
So with what is requested, without deviation, what is requested, should be requested?
I hate to be threatened with math at a public hearing, by the way.
No, I think this is, this is numbers game.
It's 11, it's 11 units is the difference there.
Worse than...
Two's and ones, how many additional would have dens?
Okay, so just because I have, what I could do at the moment, I know this is a little unorthodox, I could have my principal provide a little bit of brief testimony on this issue as to what the intent was with the plan from the operational perspective. We could perhaps interrupt Mr. Raker for about 30 seconds. I could bring in Mr. Schwartz to testify to that. If you would like to hear.
Sure.
Okay. So you can stay there, Mr. Raker. Jonathan can speak from the mic. If you would, Mr. Valeria?
You swear to testimony given be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Give us your full name for the record.
Jonathan Schwartz.
Okay, and Jonathan, just briefly, you're the principal of the applicant, correct?
Correct.
And you oversaw the preparation of plans and the intended plans, correct?
Correct.
Okay, why don't you talk to the board a little bit about this den issue?
Sure.
And what you, what you mean to do there.
So we, we believe this is gonna be a, you know, fairly high empty nester renter here. So, you know, the dens are generally important for that, for that demographic. We've done, you know, lots of surrounding towns, similar type projects in Chatham, in West Orange. Generally, those two-bed dens have, I would say, if I had to put a percentage to it, 85% of them are empty nesters that do not have any kids. They want the extra space. We have in our leases that you cannot use it as a bedroom. We do, we don't put closets. There's not an extra bathroom. We'd prefer to have them, to have doors, but we'll have that they, they'll be fully glassed and that you can't have any curtains on them. So for all intents and purposes, they end up being an office, or potentially like a little extra seating area for, you know, the people to have.
And what, I mean, what type of oversight enforcement do you, I mean, you're not going into everybody's unit to see whether they're using it as a bedroom or not?
Yeah, but we, no, but we know if everyone, we know who occupies every unit. So like, generally, it's not...
That's really what I'm asking. How, how do you do that?
Yeah, no, it's in, it's in the lease, and we know, I mean, we only make a certain amount of key fobs. We have cameras everywhere. We know people can't just like say, oh, I have a pretend kid that, you know, isn't on the lease. They're living there. We would catch that. So, you know, whether or not somebody, you know, puts a couch in there for a guest, you know, that might happen, but we, we're able to monitor pretty closely. We know exactly who's living in, you know, there's, you have to, everyone who's living there has to be on the lease.
Any questions from any of the other, and what we're really talking about is 11 extra units? Is that the number that we're...
Yep, and six of them are one-bedroom dens. So again, that's just for, you know, extra space generally for an empty nester.
So six one-bedroom dens, five two-bedroom dens is really what we're talking about?
Correct. Correct.
Okay, so anybody else have any other?
So just clarifying question, so in 11 units, we are saying there is no den, but deviation will add the den, is that what it is?
No, what we're saying is that they are requesting these 11 dens. Our interpretation is that it is a deviation from the standards, and their interpretation was that they could include the affordable units in the calculation that would make it compliant.
We based it on the 226 total units, because obviously this was, these, this, the percentage was talked about very early on, so we always in our head thought about it as in 226. We may have calculated it wrong, so then if, yeah, if Mr. Allen believes that, Miss Allen believes that, we would just say that it would be a deviation.
Okay, thank you.
So you would either, it would be a variance, so when you're dealing with a redevelopment plan, they're not called variances, they're called deviations, they're basically the same thing. So they would require a variance or a deviation to permit the extra 11 units with dens, or they could eliminate them and make it conforming.
What we're really looking at is an interpretation of the redevelopment plan, I don't know what the thoughts were at the time.
The original plan, when it was being developed, the affordable units were actually.
They were offsite.
They were concerned to be going offsite.
But the rationale for limiting the number of dens in the redevelopment, in the redevelopment plan regardless?
Was, you know, to prevent possible use of them and.
Yeah, from a practical matter, we're not, like, especially with the one bed dens, if somebody's like living there as a single person with a kid, we generally flag that, you know, so just be.
I'm gonna step in here for a second. So what we, we're proposing a minor deviation from, I'm not sure if it's a design standard in the plan or a.
No, it would be a.
A bulk standard, we're proposing a minor deviation from the percentage of market rate units which have a den. And to ameliorate that proposed deviation, the applicant is willing to stipulate to have a condition in the lease that none of the dens shall be utilized as a living space, and I'm sure Livingston, like many of the towns, requires as a condition for a turnover of an apartment, they require an inspection. Is that right, Mr. Lewis, you may know?
We do not have.
We don't.
Okay. But, okay, but there are, but as a condition of the lease that we can propose as a stipulation, a condition of lease which prohibits the use of the den for an occupancy, again, that is not a habitable.
Yes, we normally require that anyway. And there are no, there are no closets.
No closets, and something I'll add is, a building of this size will generally probably have six to eight full-time employees, one of which who lives there, plus a 24-hour doorman. We're in and out of these units quite frequently with, you know, maintenance requests and stuff like that, so we will know if somebody's using it as a bedroom.
Okay. Any other questions from the board, concerns?
No, but just to be clear, I mean, I think the safer way is to grant it as a deviation than err on the side of interpreting.
Yeah, whether, yeah, interpretation or not, I think it's just easier just to deal with it as a deviation. Okay. All right.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. All right, Mr. Raker, let's go back to your testimony about the architecture, please.
Sure, I think there was only one other item that I needed to finish up, and there was a question asked earlier about security cameras, and there will be security cameras throughout the garage and throughout the project site, so there, it's well monitored.
There was also, I think, another point, storage for bicycles?
Yes, I did, I did mention there, we do have storage for bicycles.
Is it sufficient?
It is sufficient, yes.
In your opinion, it's sufficient?
I believe we have, I'm not sure if it was in the redevelopment plan, I'll have to check if there was a number, we have two storage locations. We have a bike storage area here, we have bike racks in this area of the garage as well. So the bike room, sometimes we do some amenities, some repair tools, some things in there that help bikes out.
And just for the record, how many exterior courtyards are there? I think the redevelopment plan calls for three?
There are three exterior courtyards, one is enclosed, I would say, on four sides, the two others are enclosed on three sides.
And they're each, to contain no less than 500, 5,000 square feet, so they're compliant with the plan?
They are compliant with the redevelopment plan, correct.
I may have missed this earlier, is there bike storage on the front near the amenities?
There's, let's go back to that level.
Like a bike rack?
For people visiting retail restaurants or whatever.
We notice a bike racks right at the front.
Okay, thank you.
On the exterior, correct.
Is there any provisions for e-bike storage?
No, not for e-bike storage, not separately. But I don't imagine that it wouldn't fit within a regular bike storage.
A separate room.
I don't believe we're allowed to have e-bike storage.
Oh, there won't be any e-bike storage?
No, I don't believe that's permitted.
That'll be in the lease, nobody.
I don't think it's permitted by the redevelopment plan.
I thought, let me take a look. It says the bicycle storage space shall anticipate the storage of e-mobility vehicles and potential risks associated with same, such as batteries overheating and causing fire damages when recharging. So the redevelopment plan anticipates e-bikes being charged within an actual room that can accommodate if there was a fire, and not in the residence units.
That would just mean we'd have to install some electrical outlets next to those.
Well, it's only if you want them.
So that's an easy accommodation.
It just says if you have them, you have to have UL tested and approved charging stations within the area, leases have to say you can't put e-bikes and charge them in your unit, which I'm sure you don't want anyway.
And all of these spaces are in the garage, which is, you know, is a, it's a fully rated structure, because it's a garage.
So the e-bike storage room would be separate?
It would not be separate from the bike storage, it would just have outlets in it. We couldn't, it would be hard for us to differentiate how many people are going to have e-bikes versus regular bikes, so we would have to have outlets sufficient enough to make sure that we can cover all the e-bikes.
And this may be architectural slash traffic question. The bikes, right, so we have roadways around the property, I'm sure there'll be a speed limit and what have you. Usage of bikes, I mean, yeah, of course, we can have racks and all of that. Is it practically possible to have anybody riding the bike in and out of the complex and be still safe? Where I'm leading with this question is, when we see the roadways around, in the periphery, as well as inside, you know, in the garage, going in and out with the bike, bicycle, when the cars are going in and out, are there any considerations, number one? Number two, the bikes are not just meant to be used within the site itself, right? So are there any accesses to, sort of, you know, special accesses to be a safe in and out for bikes?
So we do have a separate access for the bike room. The bike room has separate access, so it's, they're not utilizing the vehicular garage access points. On site, they have, there's plenty of sidewalks on site to walk your bike down to a right-of-way and then bike on to the next location. You know, biking is, it's as relatively safe on this site as it is on any site across Livingston. We don't have any bike lanes on our, in our, we do have sidewalks, and if someone is unsure themselves and doesn't feel like biking through the parking lot, they can always walk their bike down the sidewalk until they feel they're in a safe spot.
Which is where I was leading with my question, are there any bike safety, sort of bike lanes or safe passages for the bikes to go in and out of the property?
Like I said, they could take them down, walk them down the sidewalk if they feel more safe. I know most confident bikers will just jump on and ride right down on the road if they feel confident to do so. Any other questions from?
Yeah, I have a question.
Sure.
Counselor, did you mention discussion of internal signage? Did I hear you, are we going to get to that?
It's, that is just directional signage to be installed in conjunction with the input of the board's professionals, that's for vehicular traffic, small signs saying turn right here for this, turn left.
Because it's a complicated layout, and it seems to me, Mr. Schwartz noted, there's going to be a doorman, so if they're delivering my couch, they'll pull up to the front door and then you're going to send them back around to someplace else where if there was a sign, deliveries.
No, understood.
It's a bigger issue, I think, than perhaps your.
I think I can answer that question. It's important that we maintain access and maintain control, so people should go to the front door. If they pull around to a loading area, if they just follow a sign to a loading area, there'll be nobody at the loading area to receive them, open the door, let them in. So it's better that, if they're received, they're known, a visitor, they're going to be entering the building, and they're led to a loading area.
At the entrance to the main loop, it should say, everybody go here and we'll tell you where to go?
I think there's a, there's a large area, a drop-off area there, that they can pull up and get access and get direction.
Okay.
And I just want to make a note, just for your information, that for any directional signage, if it includes an advertisement kind of sign, it's like the name of the development or something like that, then it no longer becomes a directional signage.
Understood, yes.
Question the pool, are established hours for the pool use?
I don't do, if you have hours.
10 to 6.
Okay, thank you. There was discussion of a generator, has that been located on the property?
It's located on the roof.
Access to that will be?
Through a roof hatch. Oh, we have a stairwell.
Go upstairs.
Oh, we have this stairwell here, access is.
Where's the generator located?
That's the generator right there.
Will there be a standpipe at the top of that stairwell?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
I just want to add that move-ins are all scheduled, and very specific directions are given to each tenant as to which access to go through and which loading dock to go through, and we even provide maps to the tenants so they can give to the moving companies.
I understand that, I was referring to the 500 pizza pies that'll be delivered a week.
Yeah, they generally, you know, figure it out with signage, and they, you know, this big canopy that they generally can see that that's the kind of in and out from the lobby.
Any other questions from the board? Any questions from the public as to this witness's testimony?
Actually, can I just ask?
Oh, yeah.
One additional question. I'm sorry, this might have been covered at the prior hearing where Andrew was here. The front yard setback, was that the average, the average required was 15 feet, was it 7.8 feet proposed?
Checking.
Checking, just because if there's another deviation, I want us to have it on the record.
7.8 feet.
Okay, so that would be an additional, just for your information, additional deviation. The redevelopment plan anticipated an average front yard setback of 15 feet, just to provide additional seating, if there was like a cafe or some sort of use, and they're proposing about a 7.8. Oh, you're right, I'm sorry.
It's okay.
Shall be staggered with these as setback, at least 15 feet from the property line, and creating an average of five feet. So was there staggered areas that have at least 15?
The dining areas.
Yes.
Okay, thank you, sorry for my confusion.
No problem at all.
So I do have a, oh.
It's okay, go ahead, you go.
Sure.
Okay.
Okay, go ahead.
So one quick question. You mentioned about the grading, the site itself has grading, so if I'm looking from the back, then versus looking at the front, am I looking at five story from the back, four from the front, or vice versa?
So it's, it's more, it's not a simple answer, on the left side, you're looking at five, on the right side, you're looking at four, because of the grading.
It's parallel to Livingston Avenue?
Correct, so as you're looking at the elevation, this is the low side, and the north side is where grade is up, so. It's only four stories on the north side, five stories on the south side.
Got it, thanks.
So my question is about stories, right?
Name and address again, please.
Jim Devlin, 41 Sherbrooke Parkway.
Appreciate it.
My question is about stories, right, how high, like, when I look it up and Google it, right, it says stories range, how high is the rear of that structure going to be?
So, your question is answered by the definition of height in the town.
Yes.
Is 60 feet, and it's measured from average grade around, so you take the average of all the grades around the building, and you get this sort of mean line, and you measure from that to where the roof is, that height is 60 feet, and we comply with the ordinance.
Right, and so.
So now, if you were to look at the right, the far side of, Michael, can you just go back to that rear? So that far side would be lower than that 60 feet, and this side would be a little bit higher than that 60 feet. But since height is measured to the average, we have to measure from a specific point, and that would be, that's where we comply with the ordinance.
Okay, and I think initially, we had big concerns, because the people living on Sherbrooke, I mean, even if it's, the pool's covered, right, those windows are looking right out on those neighbors and into the windows, et cetera. There was a discussion when it was initially 190 units, that the rear would be tiered back some way? Is that, was that a shift in the plans? Because now it looks like it's all same height.
That is not a part of the redevelopment plan, any stepping in the rear of the site. But we have, but we do have, we do have insets, so in other words, we don't have a wall of units. That's along, that's along this side.
That's on that side.
Oh, in this garage, oh, I see. I see, okay, yeah. So the step back happens here at the first floor, it steps back.
But it's, yeah, but it'll still be, that's 60 feet or more than 60 feet looking in, right?
So if you're measuring from grade, the bottom, that, where the sidewalk is, to that roof, it would be more than 60 feet, correct?
Okay. What changed with the additional, when we went to put the affordable housing onto this plan, what changed from the original plan to the affordable housing, adding those additional units?
I believe that there was a leg that was added to the front, sort of where we created that drive under, to add those units in.
Okay. I just, I have another question, I don't know if this is the right, you're the right person to ask that question, but in the proposal, there's language that says that the applicant that would allow it to be deemed amended to include any additional approvals, variances, exceptions, deviations, or waivers deemed desirable, like, that if this is approved tonight, or whenever it's approved, then there could be additional changes made that are deemed desirable, is that, what does that mean?
That's my legal notice.
Yes.
That's my, that's the legal notice, so what that means is that if during the course of the application, there was some deviation that was either discovered during the course of testimony, or that the applicant decided to propose, that it would encapsulate that. So what you've heard tonight is the proposal. This is what we're presenting to the board for consideration. Because this is a redevelopment plan, we are not permitted to change the use, to exceed the density, to exceed the stories, or the height requirement, without seeking an amendment to the redevelopment plan. So what you got is what you got, that is, that is it.
And further to his point, any, the deviations that were in the notice refer to things that came up in the course of the hearing, for example, you heard the one about glass doors and whatever. If their approval is granted tonight, whatever that approval is, that's set in stone, can only be amended through an application to amend, additional notice, another public hearing, there's no subsequent changes down the road without going through this whole process again.
That's correct.
Thanks.
Thank you. Any other questions from the public as to this witness?
Any other questions from the public as to this witness? Seeing none?
I have no further witnesses for affirmative testimony on this application. I have closed out my case, Mr. Chairman. I now, we're now at the point of public comment and the closeout of the application.
So, now is the opportunity for anybody to come up to the microphone to speak against or in favor of the application under oath, so this would be your opportunity to do so. If anybody has anything, if they want to say just, you know, any general comments against the application or in favor of the application, this is the time. Welcome back.
41 Sherbrooke Parkway.
Thank you.
I just, you know, as you know, in the fall of 2023, many residents, including my wife and myself, spoke to the town council, at town council meetings and signed a petition asking that the proposed project be scaled back. The 195 units, residential units in 60-foot height that were ultimately approved already far exceeded the typical density and height standards of Livingston Avenue. I understand because redevelopment, that it's not considered a variance but, or a deviance, but it kind of opens up the floodgates, right? While we were disappointed that these community concerns were not fully addressed at this time, we're at least reassured by the council decision to require that the tallest portions of the building be set back. At least that was my understanding, from existing residential properties. Now that the site will also include special needs and affordable housing, which we fully support, it is even more important that the overall number of units be reduced and that the height remain restricted particularly near neighboring homes. Not increased to accommodate the affordable housing. Adding 31 units to this lot for affordable housing and special needs should require the market rate units be reduced by 31 to 164 units. Increasing the size or scale of the development beyond what was approved would only worsen the concerns voiced by the community last fall, including the environmental impact, impact on infrastructure, and the inevitable increase in dangerous traffic to surrounding neighborhoods. We are especially troubled by the language, but you guys explained to me that, I guess you still have to come back as far as if there's any major deviance that are happening, okay? But we believe that the project must adhere strictly to the terms approved in the fall of 2023, 195 units, maximum height of 60 feet, and appropriate setback from residential property lines. This development already represents a significant departure from the character and scale of the surrounding area. Any further increase in height or density would wholly inappropriate and detrimental to the community. We urge the planning board to uphold the commitments made in 2023 and to reconsider perhaps reducing some of the plan. Thank you. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Any other members of the public wish to make a sworn statement for or against the application? Seeing none?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, members of the board. And I also thank the members of the public who have come forward with some very thoughtful suggestions. Just briefly, this project has been long in the making. We do appreciate all the time and attention that this board, this community, has given to this application. I think we have proposed a wonderful reuse of a site, which is longly vacant, or not vacant, but underutilized, and we're utilizing it in appropriate fashion. And we do look forward with your blessing to move forward with the revitalization of this property, which is a benefit to the community and to the site in whole. And we respectfully ask for your approval of the application with the minor deviations that have been requested this evening. I thank you for your time and attention.
Thank you. The parties having had opportunity to make closing statements, it appears to the chair that the applicant, all interested persons, and the board members have had reasonable opportunity to be heard, and that the evidentiary record of this hearing ought to be closed. Absent objection and in the absence of any motion for a continuance, the evidentiary record is closed, and no further testimony or evidence shall be heard or received. You know, the members of the board have the opportunity to state their, and discuss their views, and, you know, and as we complete our discussion, we can proceed in one of two ways, either a motion to approve or disapprove, or to give non-binding guidance to our attorney to prepare a resolution for consideration at a future meeting with the hearing continued, to, you know, consider that resolution once we've given non-binding guidance to our attorney. So, I'll turn it over to the board for discussion.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, first, I'd like to thank all the residents who came out, who came out initially and heard, you know, expressed their concerns, and I think a lot of those were taken into account. I'd certainly also like to recognize Mr. Orth, Mr. Schwartz, your entire team for putting together a very, you know, complete and professional presentation, answering all the questions, and really working with us to address a lot of those community needs. In terms of the size of the project, I think when, even before you were involved, when I was the first approached with this, it was 380 units, so it did come down considerably to the gentleman, Mr. Devlin. I would note, the original redevelopment plan provided the opportunity for the affordable golf site, but still also provided the opportunity for them to stay on site so that what they did now was not an expansion of the plan. Unfortunately, those plans to do it off-site did not work out, but even incorporating them inside, they still had to stay within the same heights, the same setbacks, the same bulk, whether those units were in or not. So, bring those units back, did not make the building any closer to any property lines, did not make it any higher. And there was some confusion, but the redevelopment plan does provide, and their plan did provide, that there is that step back in the back. Any portions up to 30 feet have to be 80 feet from the residential property line. Anything above 30 feet has to be 100 feet from the property line, and the plans do comply. That was that step back that you talked about, so that was honored. Again, I, it's, you know, it's a situation, we, and we say it all the time, and certainly Councilman Batani can attest to this. We were, you know, you're dealt with having to deal with all these affordable housing needs. We tried to do the best that we can to find projects that fit. This is a property that I think everyone can agree needed something to be done there because it's in bad shape. So, just overall, I appreciate it. I would make a motion, I think because of the number of conditions and deviations that have been in play, I think the best move is to go with a non-binding guidance so the attorneys can all work out the exact language of the resolution, then we vote on that. But I would support that. The conditions I note are the commitment to clean and clear the existing and remaining veget, you know, any existing and remaining vegetated areas. They'll clear out any dead trees and clean it all up. Installation of the fence, evaluate and include evergreens where feasible to provide more year-round buffer. Deviations that I had were to permit doors on dens, condition on them being translucent, glassy through. And I would, I could support, given the measures being taken to, and as described by Mr. Schwartz, to ensure that bedrooms are, you know, dens don't become bedrooms. I would support the deviation, the minor deviation on the number of dens. So, with that, that's my motion.
And there's just, and again, we'll go through, you know, the transcripts just to make sure that we catch more of some of the others. Oh, sorry.
You know, the, no, you know, no, no left out, you know, in the southern, northern driveway, northern driveway. The onsite management will monitor all the drop-offs. Let's see, and there were a couple of, you know, see-through doors.
Head-in parking in the back.
Right. The standpipe by the generator, the pool hours, those sorts of things.
Wall for the pools. Wall behind the pool. I think it goes on on the drawing. We should add that in stipulation.
So, I will, I will second that motion. If anybody else has any thoughts, any discussion?
I would just like to add that this is, this is not, this is not an easy thing, absolutely. And I think over the years, the residents have come to the council meetings, have voiced their concerns. I think each one of the members sitting here, of course, except for Barry, but I think we are residents and also be part of this. So, I absolutely thank the residents who have come here and have voiced their concerns. It's important that we remain engaged as an active community. I think from the team's perspective, who have presented last time and this time, I agree with Barry, it was a very professional, well-designed, and sort of, they were readily answering questions. And I noticed that they were ready to add deviation, sort of additional clauses to sort of adjust the plan accordingly, including the safety concerns on traffic, what have you. So, yes, I agree with Barry that let's work out on the details. And these deviations are important, sorry, I keep on using the word deviations. These are the conditions, the stipulations are very important. I think let's have that in place and then proceed from there. Thank you.
Yeah, I support the non-binding resolution. Green, I support the idea of a non-binding resolution. There was an awful lot of material discussed tonight, and it'd be a good opportunity to review it again, take a look, and make sure we all come out on the right side. So, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, this has been going on for five or six years, and I think legally, there could be 500 or 600 units. So, coming down to 220-something is, 26 is certainly, you know, incredibly reasonable and generous of the builder. I just drove down by Northfield and South Livingston Avenue, and that was also a big project that we approved. And actually, it looks very beautiful, and I think it made that whole area look very nice. I think this looks very beautiful. I think this is going to be a nice addition to the area. I think everything's been done to protect the residents, and I think maybe even we'll get some speed bumps on Sherbrooke Parkway, I'm at of this, you know, if we could. So, I think it's going to, when it's done, it's going to be, it's going to be very beautiful, and I support it, and non-binding guidance in favor.
Anything else? Okay, great. Jackie, when would that be on?
Mr. Chairman, I can list this for our meeting on September 2nd.
Mr. Chairman?
Is that enough time?
Oh, I'm sorry to interrupt. Just typically, I'll defer to Mr. Valerio, but certainly within the board's discretion to direct the board attorney to adopt a, to prepare a resolution. But typically, there is a voice call or a roll call vote to direct the board attorney to adopt the resolution. Seems to be in favor, subject to a subsequent vote at another meeting.
Yeah, no, yeah. We already made the motion in second, then I'm just trying to get timing?
Yes, yes, sir.
How's this, is the second reasonable or not?
Well, I will do my best.
So, we'll list it for the second if we end up having to carry it again.
It'll be two more, two weeks after, if I can get it. And I'll work, I'll work with you to get it.
Thank you, Mr. Valerio.
Yeah, so we'll list it for the second. If, just, you know, it is August, people are away. It's sometimes tough this time of year, but.
I've heard rumors of such things.
We're not awake. We're here. So, if, you know, we'll list it for the second. Hopefully, we can get it done for the second, but if not, we'll just, you know, carry it for one more meeting. Jackie, you want to take a roll call on this?
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I believe that was a motion by Mr. Lewis.
Yes.
With you as the second, Mr. Chairman. Or Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Fernandez?
Yes.
Mr. Ratner? Mr. Ratner? Didn't, I didn't get that. Thank you. Ms. Reber?
Yes.
Ms. Foss?
Yes.
Mr. Dufford?
Yes.
Mr. Batani?
Yes.
Ms. Vishnu is voting for Vice Chair Santola.
Yes.
Ms. Khan is voting for absent member Diener.
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, thank you for everybody coming out. We appreciate your input. You know, getting public input, I think, makes the project better. And thank you for, you know, the presentation, and, you know, thank you to all the experts.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, members of the board. Appreciate your time.